Dell and Lisa will be coming, so we might as well. Thank you for coming. I feel like we have a lot of stuff, but we always have a lot of stuff.
Seems like it.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah. So right off, I just wanted to give a little clarification because some people asked a few questions the other night when we had our open house. So this is just a little bit of clarification that I tried explaining when I was out in the hall. We had noticed it as an open house, and so that's why we had, it was required to have an open house. We had a quorum present of both Planning Commission and City Council. So for us, at the last minute, we would change it to a meeting. It would have been recorded, which we, I don't know how we could have recorded it because it was just a lot of noise going on. And because I had people say, well, why did you do it this way? And I said, well, it was noticed as this. So we just need to make sure that when we notice things, we follow our own rules and regulations. And it would have been a little hard to have done it anyway, but that's just, that's just how it was. So we are going to be appointing a new Planning Commission member. So next meeting, the week, we'll have the agenda out the week before. And so when you see your packet, I have had three people so far turn in applications. I've had two more people that have said they are interested. One of them has already came and gotten an application. One person called today and said, hey, would like to pick up an application. So what we'll do with that is I will do the interviewing. You'll see on our next agenda, it will say the name of the person. And then that will be a discussion that will happen here because that has to be approved by City Council. Is that all correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And so hopefully then there will be someone that will be in place for their Planning Commission's next meeting because then they will have a meeting that Thursday after us. And so then they won't be here shortly.
Understand their meeting went until ten o'clock?
Yeah, it was pretty late. Yeah, it did.
Let's not try to get them.
At their meeting, we need to reappoint a chair. So we need to have that on the, uh huh, Planning Commission. Yes, I verified that with Brandon too. So they need to reappoint a chair and a vice chair at their next meeting. So, yeah. Okay, um, just a couple of things. And Dell's not here. I was going to ask him if he has those, the bid, the contract back from that planning so I can sign it for the House. The one that is going to be doing our, the management company. And I, but when he comes, we can ask him. I, because I don't know if he, I don't know if they've given those to him, like those bids. I don't know, but we, anyway, we need to get that. Oh, here he comes now. So we can ask him when he comes in, just so we can get that signed. So we'll have to get that contract signed, so. Dell, I was just asking, do you have the contract ready to be signed for the home?
No, they'll come into the city to do that.
Oh, okay, okay. That's just a question we had. That we didn't know if we were going to, going to do that or not, so.
No.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing.
Yeah, okay. The next thing was, is. So I have talked to Jared, a minute about with Reed, and then also with the sheriff. And we'd like to go a little different direction with our portable speed sign. In order for it to be liable, like if anybody got hurt doing it, if it's under someone in the city that's employed doing that, they would be covered under the insurance, under workman's compensation. And so Jared said Public Works is going to start taking over that function of doing that because that way we're all covered as far as anything within.
Does the sheriff decide where to put that?
So I talked to the sheriff. I know people call and give names to the city. And I talked to the sheriff and he said, yes, that they would also help us coordinate with that. I talked to him last night. And then another thing to ascend, we could have that data. We'd like to do a spreadsheet. And so when we do have some money, we could see where we want to put more speed signs.
So I was given that assignment over that speed sign, so what?
So look, I don't know if we need to re, we're just gonna take that away from a City Council member and just have it be under the direction of the, the Public Works. So do we need to do anything with that, or is that just?
Well, I think the, the council may, may build assignments. And I don't know if, if we can just, like the mayor can just say, well, I want to reassign or take that away from, I mean, who is it that's actually taking that assignment away?
So Public Works is who's going to start doing that assignment?
Who's taking that assignment away?
Public Works are going to start doing the portable sign, so.
So it's more the why, right?
Yeah, it's more of the why. It's just more of a safety of, like I say, being covered under the insurance and the liability if anything happened and it wasn't an employee, if it's an employee. So I don't know, do we need to, we do?
Is that, was, was that something made by the City Council?
Yeah, this is what the 2024 City Council assignments.
Are we under the umbrella of our insurance company, City Council people?
We should see because we're at all the functions and stuff.
Probably not workers comp.
Yeah.
You'd have to pay for that. I'm sure you're not paying for it. You're probably under the liability insurance if you were to run into somebody or something like that.
Running into somebody or somebody running into us out there studying it somewhere. I don't know.
I'm just saying, we probably ought to be covered for something like, we're the tornado days and stuff like that. Looking and if something happens, we should have some kind of coverage.
What the status is for volunteers, I don't know.
Yeah.
Be worth asking, insurance.
Yeah, we could do in a couple of weeks then redo the assignments if you want to do that. We could just have that listed as, you know, the assignments.
Yeah, then maybe we could go through all the, redo the assignments. That might be a good thing.
Sure.
That's my only concern is liability. Now, is something maybe hit, or somebody hit you?
Is it, it's a trailer, is that what it is?
Yeah, that they pull with, with a truck. It's a privately owned truck. If it's Public Works, it would be under a city truck that would be pulling it and so.
Well, if, if those assignments haven't been redone since the new council, we ought to redo them all.
We did them in January.
We did them in January. Yeah, yeah. If you want to include that on the next agenda, do we do the assignments? Is there anybody else that wanted different assignments than the ones that were assigned?
Yeah, I think we could, I might need to give a look at all of them.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt. Okay, we'll have that on the agenda. Okay, the next thing then, well, it kind of goes along with a couple of things. So it's been happening quite frequently. And it's certainly by ordinance that two City Council people can ask for something to be on the agenda. I also talked to Reed about this. Even if that is the case, which it is, I still need to know, because I'm conducting the meeting, what is going to be on the agenda? Because I called Reed because we had a question about something that was put on the agenda and then it was taken off the agenda. And when we received the packet, we really weren't sure. And Morgan really wasn't sure what it was. And so it, we really do just need to have.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts there. It seems to me that, that clearly ought to be a discussion of anything that goes on the agenda so that it's known. But I think there's also some consideration for how many things you put on the agenda. And I, I think there needs to be some reason used there. You may like nine o'clock, ten o'clock meetings, I hope.
Yeah.
So when you say ten, where, does that constitute the whole block? Cause I know everyone says ten.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that some, some of them, of course, don't take any time at all.
Right.
We wondered about that, where there's an ordinance that limits it to ten, is that everything that's listed there?
Yeah, we had that question too. We didn't know. Because they're listed like one through ten. So does that mean one through ten, or do you count every single thing?
Discussion and action items. I would, I would think like discussion and action items probably would be once that hits.
Well, some things like public comments sometimes can take some time, just depends.
Yeah.
But upcoming events probably isn't gonna take long.
Yeah, some of these things, there isn't even anything to even say. You know, they're listed on there as a number, but there isn't like public hearings. There's not any, some of them, when you go through, there really isn't anything. But some of them, if they need to count and.
And I guess my thought would be, even the ten ought to be done with some thought. If you've got something on there, like the Planning Commission had last week, where you know it's gonna be a huge public outcry, you probably don't want to put nine other things on the agenda.
Right.
So I think it's a lot of judgment that's bothering mine.
Yeah. And if there's ever anything you want on the agenda, I'm certainly happy to put it on. If it's something that should be placed on the agenda, that's under City Council jurisdiction, we just need to know. So we know what it is. Cause like with that, then when we got the packet, it was the whole agreement, I think, between like, well, Brent Larson, I think it's signed up and it was at the tower.
I didn't understand that.
I didn't either.
Why was that on? Who put that on?
The what?
That, that agreement on the, the Brent Larson sale over there.
I don't know why.
So it wasn't on, on the sale, it was on?
It was on the maintenance, it was on the, is what it should have been.
And why did we have all that agreement?
I don't know why all that.
I looked all through that and thought, I don't want to read it again.
Yeah, we, yeah, we didn't know, so.
Yeah, it was just, it just had to do with property.
Yeah, well, anyway, so if you just, you know, maybe give Morgan more information, let me know so I can let Reed know just so when we come, we actually know what's going to be on the agenda.
Well, for example, this is a good item, eight C. Is, is that really, is there an agreement somewhere? If so, would have been nice to have seen it.
Yeah, I haven't seen one.
Well, there isn't any.
It says draft, so.
Yeah.
So I think, cause I looked through, I didn't see an agreement, but I think it's too drafty.
You mean that came out, that came out originally?
Well, I.
There was an agreement that came out originally, but then when we, when Morgan redid it, then she took that out.
There was no agreement for the West Haven City.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, is that, I thought you were talking about.
Bryant had gave me both agreements for the tower property and I guess I just had put it to the packet.
Well, which were you? I thought you were talking about the tower property.
Oh, I was, I was talking about the.
That's what was removed, it was the same.
Yeah, and we, and we don't have an interlocal agreement yet. That's something we need to talk about tonight, is doing this interlocal agreement. And then having you, Reed, talk to West Haven's attorney about drafting an interlocal agreement with West Haven City. The only thing that I do have, but I didn't put it in the packet because I didn't know if we should or not, but I can certainly let you see it, is just a letter, Dell, that you signed that with two West Haven City that said, it talks about what the project was. And it just says, please note that Hooper City has discussed and is willing to participate financially with the street improvement project. So we talked about that a little bit last.
That could be one dollar.
Hello? Hello?
That could be, there's no obligation, no city match. It could be one dollar.
So I guess my point is, before there would ever be an agreement, it seems to me like it needs to be a meeting of the minds.
Yeah, yeah, we did. Bryant and I went and met and there was West Haven City manager and their engineer and their Public Works. Jared wasn't able to go to the meeting. And so they're the ones that gave me this letter and said that this was agreed upon and gave me this. And it says the road improvement, well, it talks about what they will be. They will widen the road, include a median, and will create sidewalks that do not currently exist. And so.
When was that? When did I do that?
Um, I can pass it over to Dell. It was March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So is, in their mind, is there an agreement? And have, do they think the city's committed to a certain amount of money?
Well, so their, their thinking is because it's a road that splits Hooper and West Haven. And because the majority of the children that are going to be going to the new elementary actually live on the Hooper side. So what this is doing is causing the white, road to be widened and put a sidewalk. We talked about a lot of themes as far as do we need to have a sidewalk on both sides of the street? A lot of times, you know, the developer is the one that will pay for the improvements. But currently, we don't have a developer for the west side of the road. That is the Torgeli property. And so, but one thing they said, so, so I have a cost now of what it will be. It also includes a stoplight that they want to put in at the corner of four thousand and fifty-one hundred. They're seeing if they can get it to increase a little more money to go, this originally that Dell signed was just from thirty-three to thirty-eight. But they want to go from thirty-eight to four thousand and then it'll include some turning lanes for the new stoplight that's going to be there. If it ends up costing more, so, so right now the bid is five hundred thousand dollars, which means we would each split two hundred and fifty thousand. There would be an additional forty thousand dollars to continue it from thirty-eight hundred to four thousand. And fifty thousand dollars is our match for the street light on the corner. And they said if anything changes and maybe prices go up, that what they could do is just put curb gutter and sidewalk on one side and not have it on the other side. And maybe on the west side, not have the road go over as far to have to have a sidewalk. One thing also to consider is the sharing of a crossing guard because now there's gonna be Hooper children that are going to have to cross the street. And I think it's thirty-eight, twenty-five or thirty-seven?
Thirty-six, twenty-five.
Thirty-six, twenty-five that comes out there. So they're going to have, so if we don't have a sidewalk on the one side, on the west side, they're going to have to cross fifty-one hundred to get to the sidewalk. If we do have a sidewalk even on our side, they're going to have to cross the street at thirty-three hundred to get to the new school. So what they want is to do is just to draft this interlocal agreement that we are going to financially participate. And these are the costs. But again, they're just tentative because it actually doesn't start. And I expressed to them the concern with our financial situation, Hooper. But I feel like that we should probably, when Kami comes tonight, allocate maybe half of the money in the next year's budget cycle and then do the other half of the money in the following budget cycle. And they said they could pay first and then we could be the ones that paid at the end. And by then, maybe we would be able to come up with the money. But ethically, I don't feel right with saying, well, our children are going to need to walk on the sidewalk and West Haven, you pay all the cost and Hooper City pay none, whereas a shared road. So anyway, that's that and we talked about more, but that's what that was. So we don't have anything yet. You know, they send a map and I asked Bryant, do we need to put a map up? We figure everyone's probably pretty familiar with fifty-one hundred south. But there is a map if you want Morgan to pull it up on Geogizmo. If you think that would be helpful when we're discussing it. So, but anyway.
So is that fifty-one hundred west?
That is fifty-one hundred west and between thirty-three hundred south to four thousand south, within the light being at four thousand south. So they did already get the WACOG. WACOG is actually paying, oh, what was their portion? They're paying so many million and the city's portion was the five hundred thousand. UDOT is paying for the street light and UDOT is paying nine hundred thousand and the city's portion was a hundred thousand. And that's why we're each splitting it and it would be fifty thousand. So.
Okay, well, to do an agreement, we need to have the numbers pinned down as best we can and approved before we do an agreement. And it's their project, so they probably take the, the initial step to put something together.
Yeah, and they did tell, let's say, those numbers, but I didn't get anything in writing. So I think their attorney maybe will just, well, but so.
I know their attorney's been in contact with Brandon and he knew nothing about it, so.
Yeah. So tonight then, do we, do we approve? Well, all tonight was, was supposed to be, was to make the motion to draft an interlocal agreement with them.
Right, but what you probably need to get approval on is the amount that you're gonna put into that interlocal agreement.
Okay.
So we're out of this table, do we get that information?
Well, we do have the numbers. It's, it's two hundred and fifty thousand for the one part of the road from thirty-three to thirty-eight. It's an additional fifty, forty thousand from thirty-eight to four thousand and additional fifty thousand for the street light on the corner. So it comes to a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so it would be a hundred and seventy thousand to put in this next year's budget and then a hundred and seventy thousand for the following year. So I thought that was something we could talk to Kami about when she comes. And that would have to be something we would discuss tonight and see if that's something we would want to have. We wouldn't have to do, like you say, the full amount in the budget, but we, I feel we should at least do half. So we're at least on our way to getting the money when we actually need it to pay.
So it's a two-year project or?
Well, yeah. A year and a half project and they would, they said, but they could, like I say, pay upfront. And so then we could catch, like pay our first hundred and seventy thousand at the end of like next June, which is the fiscal year. Then when they finished it, the project in the next year, then we would have that money set aside in the next budget for the fiscal year. And but, but again, there's a few unknowns. One of the unknowns is again, price, because as everyone knows, you know, you bid on something and then by the time they actually do it, the price could go up. Another unknown is, and I brought this up again, is if we have a developer. And so that's something we could work into a pioneering agreement that if a developer came along, that they would have to pay back that cost if we end up doing the, you know, full improvements on the side. Another thing is, is when West Weaver corridor comes through, which we talked about that. Is that three to five years before they'll start that? Is that ten years? We don't really know. And I brought that up too. And they said, well, but even if we get five years of, you know, the road improvement in there, the school district is coming down pretty hard and saying, you know, we need to do this. Which is another thing I brought up too. I wish sometimes we had a little more notice. I mean, yes, we knew they were building a school and we had children at Freedom Elementary that still continue to walk there and have not had a sidewalk the entire time that school's been in existence. From the west, coming from the east, they've had it most of the way. They did do that one little improvement that's right across the school for the sidewalk. But coming from the west, there hasn't been a sidewalk at all.
Seems like such a waste to spend. How many million dollars to put this in and have West Davis corridor come through and tear it all up?
I know. That's the same thing I said too.
I think we need to talk about it a little bit more. I've got a couple of thoughts on this and maybe it'll lead to. So, so I put on the agenda, right under truth and taxation, the conflict of interest. So, so the first point on that, that back in our meetings for the first year we had, it said declaration of conflicts of interest or disclosure by council members. So I know we requested a couple of times to put that on, so we would like that on. Just because I think, just to be transparent and fair to the city and to protect the city, I think that is an important thing, that if there's something on this agenda that, you know, hey, I can't, I can't vote or really even comment on that, I should disclose that. Which leads to my next point. I believe that we should have some more discussion on this fifty-one hundred. I don't think we, it's kind of, kind of coming from left field a little bit. I think maybe one option is not to do curb gutter on our side and create a nice site or a nice, cause you have to cross one, one area or the other. But in that same note, you working for West Haven and the mayor of Hooper, I think exposes us a little bit. And I think someone else should probably represent Hooper when there's a discussion between West Haven and Hooper. That's my opinion. And I think, I think, you know, I've, I've done some research on conflict, which I think that's, I think that's valid just for everybody's sake, for your sake, for the city's sake. And, and maybe we could negotiate a better deal. I don't know, where you, you know, that's your employer and like maybe feel a little bit obligated to them to, hey, I gotta. And so to take you out of that position in that uncomfortable situation, I think somebody else should probably do the negotiating.
And it will, yes, I understand exactly what you're saying and I appreciate that. It, it, I will not be in the picture. It'll be between the lawyers.
Well, it sounds like they have, though. Sounds like we've already negotiated it without anybody knowing. That's what it appears.
It wasn't a negotiation. It was a matter of fact, is this is the cost. Yeah.
I think we, we probably could add some leverage or, or some say in how, how that went down.
Yeah.
The attorneys can put an agreement together, but the agreement has to be there for us to put together first. We don't make the agreement.
That really matters.
No, exactly. Well, and I thought that even too when I read, because I asked that. So even when this letter was signed, City Council, anytime we're making a financial commit, commitment, City Council needs to approve. And I agree with that. So I don't think we ever should agree to a financial commitment unless if City Council is on board with it. And so I think for sure, before there's any, and if you want to go, Bryce, do you want to be the one then that goes and meets with?
I think, I think we're, I would surely do that. I would go with someone else. I would go with Dell because he, he's privy to that, but I would surely go.
Okay, and I, and Bryant will be there and Jared will be there. And, and the attorneys. To begin with, they asked if we wanted the attorneys there for this meeting and no one really felt like it was time to have the attorneys there yet because all this was, they have been calling for quite some time, asking about this from what I understand. Cause they said they have been calling because, because from their understanding, because this letter was signed, you know, March fifteenth of last year, they thought that everything was moving forward as far as what they knew. But with saying that, nothing can ever be approved without City Council because that's a large chunk of money. So we probably need to do it sooner than later because I really would like to see at least half of the money put in for this next budget year. Even if it just sits in capital projects, at least so when the time comes. And yeah, everything you've said, I, I brought up with them as well, about it seems a waste to do it. I'm just not really a wasteful person and it seemed like really a waste to put it in. But then again, we don't know when West Weaver will come through, so.
So has Jared and Bryant been in, have they been in some meetings about this?
They have. Jared couldn't go the last one, but Bryant did. So he had something else that day and couldn't go. So, and then, you know, and Bryant, again, brought up the same thing you did. Well, maybe like you said, one dollar or whatever, but, but I don't think anybody would realistically think if we were sharing a project that was included, widening the road and medium and will create sidewalks, probably our half wouldn't be, you know, a dollar. I mean, that's not realistic. But no, I think, I, I'm fine with that. And going along too with the conflict of interest. So I'll tell you my reasons for that. And one of the ordinances we're going over tonight talks about that quite a bit, conflict of interest. So each of you are required to sign a conflict of interest statement, correct? Morgan, did you say everyone has signed that?
Starting this year.
Uh huh, starting this year, everyone already signed that. And one of the things in our, one of the ordinances tonight, and let's see, which one, that you need to disclose if things are of conflict of interest. My feeling was, and the mayor is the one that does create the agenda. Dell was the one that first started having conflict of interest on there for a specific reason. I never felt like there was any reason to have that on there. I think that if you are an elected City Council member, you certainly should be ethical enough to say, if I have a conflict of interest, and say it. So that was my reasoning for not having it stated on the agenda every time.
I think it's still good to have it on there just as a reminder. You know, I, I still think it's appropriate, even though we signed something. Cause things change, they're fluid. So I, in my opinion, I would like it back on.
It's just as a reminder.
Just a reminder.
Cause we forget. We're all getting old.
I don't know how you guys feel, but I would like it on there.
When's the last time we had a conflict of interest? Since Chris King left?
Probably, yeah, probably.
I think that's the last time. That's been.
Well, we wouldn't know unless we're asked, right? So.
Well, unless you disclose, right? I mean, at any given time, any of you can disclose that you have a conflict.
That is part of what you'll sign each year, stating saying that if you have a conflict with anything on the agenda or anything that's coming for the city, you'd have to speak up and say. So for what that's worth.
Yeah.
But once again, I would like it on the, just as one of our items. It's not that big a deal.
I guess it doesn't matter either.
Doesn't matter, but I would like it on there.
Hey, that takes up one of our ten, so just.
I don't, I don't think that counts. I think, I think one of the ten would be something that.
Well, I, I, again, I really would hope that all elected officials are ethical enough that they would always disclose if they had a conflict of interest. I think people put their trust in us to do what's right. And so hopefully if you ever do, even if it wasn't verbally said, do you have a conflict of interest? That you would always do forthright and be able to. And like I say, it's in one of ours tonight. And I think it is on the one that is the sixth member, the ordinance that is, yeah. It's on the motion that we're approving ordinance twenty twenty-four four. And if you look through that, there's a whole section in that, that as we approve this tonight, that you were already saying, stating that, that if you have a conflict of interest, that you will state that. So, okay, let's see.
So are we gonna put it on or not? So, so I guess it's.
Does it have to be, Reed? Does it have to list it on there?
Does it legally have to be? No, but it doesn't hurt. I guess that's the bottom line.
So I guess if, if we want it to, if there's three of us that want to, then we should put it on. If not, then fine.
Yeah, it's fine. Like again, I hope everyone will just always.
I hope so too, but we're talking about future, you know, these positions change and different people get in there. And I think it's important.
How about if you just put a note at the bottom, rather than having to ask the question each time? Put a note at the bottom, remember if you have a conflict of interest, speak up. You want it. If you want to actually.
I like that idea. Let's just put it at the bottom, so you always see it on the agenda and that'll remind you that if you have a conflict of interest, that you will say. I like that one. Is that okay, Bryce?
That's fine, yep.
Okay.
And it won't, it won't take up one of our ten, so that.
Yeah.
That was my thought, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and one thing on the agenda, and you should have had your packet, we talked about this last time, was just the volunteer committees. So I included those, um, and these were the ones that Brian Steckline, he's the one that's the retired dean from Weaver State. He said to look through those, if you have any. It's not that we, these aren't paid by any means, these are just volunteer committees. Last time when we talked about it with Reed, we see, he just thought it would be a good idea if you just approved that we, well, I don't know what our motion's going to be, that we.
Well, if you're gonna create committees, it'd be nice to have some record of that.
Okay. Okay.
So who, like who creates the committees? Are they?
I, I think it's just volunteer.
Well, I mean, the city creates them, but whoever, how you come up with the people to be on, I don't know.
Yeah.
I could sit in here too, that we could appoint, like, create the committee and actually create, uh, like we did with Dave Harris. Same thing applies here. I read in here somewhere that, that we can do that, say, hey, you are the economic development, you know, chair or whatever.
One thing I know, because it came up in a meeting, I was listening to this, the minutes last night, is we just have to be careful. They said there's a new guideline that if it is appointed, so for instance, if I appointed someone, then at every one of their minutes, every one of their meetings, there has to be minutes and it has to be recorded. So because you know Dave, we just, I don't know if that was an official appointment, or if it was just he was willing to do it. But if, if we just have volunteers and they come and do it, then that's okay. But if we, like, if I was to officially appoint someone, then it has to be considered a meeting and there has to be minutes and it has to be recorded. So I don't.
So on our assignments, again, we discussed committees and different members of the council were responsible for different committees, whether it be economic development.
I think we're all over economic development. Yeah, I think that's, wasn't that one we changed Debbie? Was we wanted everybody on it and everybody on community events and I think everybody's on that. And I, I, what I would like, I would hope to see is if there is a committee that you're interested in being, just like you Bryce, with, um, emergency preparedness, then you've taken the lead on that, because you are on, over that. Or like Debbie, for example, if you want to be over economic development, or you've mentioned like with the veterans. I would really hope that there would be, these will be volunteers, but there might be, you know, someone from city council that would say, hey, I'm really interested in that, I'd like to go and help with that committee, so.
I think you're generally all right if they're volunteers. If, if you're giving that committee money to spend for the city, that's different. If you're just saying, we want you to be a historical committee and come to us with ideas and things that then the council will decide, I don't think you have to record those minutes.
Yeah. Well, and I don't think we've ever been, have we been recording? We haven't, have we?
Well, we have.
The emergency preparedness.
Yeah, we have actually, I've been recording, not the, not been recording, but we've been taking minutes.
Minutes, yeah.
So we have an agenda.
Well, minutes is a good idea, you see, note next time what you did.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And we do, so in that budget, we did, you know, if it's approved, there, there is money for emergency, but it's pretty, Teresa told us to do it really broad, so it's, it's used for any emergency really, you know? So it can be helping someone pay for their cert training, uh, it could be, you know, really if, if we have something fail in the city, we could use it for that too.
Uh-huh, that's true.
So, but it's something that FEMA is really, you know, if we don't have an emergency fund and we have a disaster and they, you know, want their help and we haven't tried to do anything, they're just gonna, you're on your own, so.
That was something interesting. So Debbie and I, um, and Bryant, Debbie was on Zoom and Bryant and I attended a flood meeting, I think everyone was invited to go to that. And when they listed all of the cities that were with FEMA, that was with the flood insurance, Hooper was listed. Bryant went up and asked after and that was an error, we are not. So there's some paperwork that we probably need, and I, and she, you know, Bryant took down all that information. Because we for sure, I think, want to do that and make sure that we are with that. Because at first it did list, it listed, didn't it? It listed Hooper.
Really?
Said we were.
Yeah, and then when he went up after, she said, oh, I'm sorry, that was a mistake, you're not, so.
Should be, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to make sure then. Okay, was there any other, I mean, we have budget things to go over. I think the, um, ordinances, I think you're good, we can talk about those. Lumen, we still don't have anything due.
Well, Lumen, we tried to meet with and they, they were pretty slow to respond and acted like it was us slow, which I don't understand. I think, I think Bryant has set a meeting for Monday or Tuesday, is my recollection.
I saw the Google Doc.
I saw, I couldn't make a word, but I, I told him when I was free those days.
So this agreement, so we're not gonna.
Well, we can't do the ordinance until we have some agreement with them.
Can we just table it again tonight then?
That's what I had note from our last meeting, is that, uh, they had never come back and they haven't really responded the last time we met as far as the agreement.
They, they act so anxious when they contact us and then it goes weeks and they don't do anything.
But this one's the up, the one you updated, correct?
No.
Oh, you haven't updated?
No, because we need to meet with them before I know how to update it.
Okay.
So we'll send you a new one. The one thing that was on last time that is not on this time, but you should, I don't know if you have copies for them today or not, the Board of Adjustment changes.
Uh, so it was in the packet. Oh, no, the Board of Adjustment wasn't, because it just, we just barely got it yesterday late afternoon.
So maybe, uh.
We'll do that next.
Have them take that home with them when they go. Here, here's, here's the problem. And you remember at the last meeting, we thought, let's just change the Board of Adjustment on variances and hold on the other, uh, and decide who the appellate authority will be for other decisions. But with what happened last week in the city, in the City Planning Commission with that big issue on, on the treatment program, I think it's at least reasonably likely that you may end up with an appeal of their decision by whoever it is making that application. Right now, if that happens, it goes to a Board of Adjustment, which we don't have. So, well, what, what Brandon did is update the whole, the whole thing. And, but we haven't talked to you really about what it does. And so, like, I'll point that out and then you can read it more closely and have comments. But what it does is on a variance, uh, that doesn't look, isn't looked at by anyone other than the appellate authority. So the appellate authority, which will be a, an individual that's appointed with experience in those areas, uh, would decide the variances. And if they don't like that, they can go to court. The guidelines set by state law are pretty, pretty clear, and so it's not likely there's gonna be a mistake made there, frankly. Uh, the other role that has been held by the Board of Adjustment is to hear appeals from the Planning Commission, hear appeals from the city staff, and hear appeals from this group, from the city council. Those, uh, we were a little more careful about. Uh, the way I've, Brandon's written this and I've helped him on the one that you're gonna get, is if there's an appeal from the Planning Commission, which would be generally a variance, they're not a variance, a, a conditional use permit, that's really the only thing they make a final decision on, everything else comes up to you. If there's an appeal on that, which there may be on this one that's being looked at now, that, that would come to the council, uh, as the first appeal. If that doesn't resolve it, then there would be an appeal to the, uh, to the hearing authority. And all of that would have to happen before they'd be allowed legally to go to court. So the idea is, let's try several different times to settle a thing before we end up sending them to court and getting into a court fight. Uh, decisions by this body, well, decision by city staff, uh, would be appealed first to the city council, and then again, if there's a further appeal, to the appellate authority. Decisions of your body, if there's an appeal, would go to the appellate author, to the, you know, the appellate authority, uh, and then if that doesn't resolve it, it could go to court. So what, what we've tried to do is create several levels to try to solve things before you end up in a court fight. And I think that's, that's positive. Anyway, that's the concept in that, so read it over and see what you think and we'll talk about it in the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we thought for sure we'd have that on the next agenda. Like I said, it didn't come through till a little bit later in the afternoon and we thought it really wasn't time to.
Yeah, that's fine. You're gonna meet again before the Planning Commission meets.
Yes, we will. It's June sixth is when our next meeting will be, and theirs will be June thirteenth, when that comes before them again, so that will be good, we'll have a chance to be able to talk about that. Okay, um, anything else at budget? We need to talk about budget and Kami will be coming to talk about budget. Did people have questions on budget? Lots?
Right.
I have lots.
They're circling everything.
Yeah, I have lots of stuff.
It'd be nice if we had a professional here to ask questions too, but, I, I mean, I can point out a few things if you want me to. So looking at the utility fund on the sewer, um, page six and seven, I've been scratching my head on this for a couple of days and I think I finally figured it out. But, um, if you look at the very bottom of page six, it starts sewer expenditures twenty forty-six dash one thousand. We budgeted this year, the second, so the second column is this year's budget. Um, the first column is last year's budget and the fourth column is what we're budgeting for next year. If you look at the second column, the budget for this year was six thirty-nine five hundred. Everybody see that? Next year, we're budgeting one thirty-three five hundred. The category is utilities. Okay, if you look at the top of the next page, CWSD is, um, Central Weaver Sewer District, utilities. So you'll notice there's no numbers across the top except for next year's budget of five twenty-five two hundred. So from what I can tell, we've split that category of the first line into two categories for this next coming year, which is about an increase of twenty thousand dollars from this year's budget, six fifty-eight seven hundred is the, the two lines added together. So I was thinking we were just adding a half million dollars into our budget arbitrarily that we'd never paid before, but it's actually there, just kinda hidden under the utilities line, if that makes sense. That being said, um, if you go down to the ARPA line, twenty forty-six forty-five twenty, so this year we budgeted four ninety-one five seventy-three, this coming year would just be eighty-three thousand. So that, there's a difference of about four hundred thousand right there of less ARPA money. So the total budget down at the bottom there for sewer, uh, this year, two point two million, next year, one point eight. The difference is that four hundred thousand dollars. So my question is, it really didn't go up that much, if you take out the four hundred thousand from last year to what we're budgeting next year with a utility rate increase of sixteen bucks a month or whatever it is, we didn't really increase the budgeted amount. Are you following me? Does that make sense? I thought it would be quite a substantial increase above the forty thousand dollars from Central Weaver than it really is. Actually, sorry, twenty thousand dollars than it really is.
Was that, was that twenty thousand for a quarter?
That's, that's for the year. The five twenty-five is for the year. Five twenty-five two hundred is for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. And so it only, according to these numbers, it only went up about twenty thousand. I thought it was a substantial increase they were throwing on us. But that's just the numbers on paper is all I'm seeing.
So I know Teresa did say, which I think is what you're saying, they were going to start breaking that out, because she said, and I, everybody probably has that sheet that Teresa gave to you that was broken out.
Right.
Um, because she said she wanted to have residents start seeing what we actually are paying to Central Weaver.
Central Weaver.
Uh-huh. Versus, because, and you'll probably see that on your paper, because she did have that broken out, but that would be a good thing to ask Kami. I know they've already added the increase in here, you know, that, um, having the residents pay more, it's already been added in here, um, because she said that. So I did a little bit of math too. Let me see if I, there's too many pages. Um, so they've already included, like I say, they've already included the sewer. I didn't get the total number of garbage cans, but if you take what Teresa had given us and did the two thousand two hundred and eleven residents that are on sewer, that's just on sewer. And you take the sixteen dollars extra that she's already added in there. So if you take this, you know, two thousand two hundred and eleven, times it by sixteen, times it by a month, by twelve, it comes to four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twelve dollars a year, would be what they've already added into the budget, because they've already included that in, that we're going to be collecting that revenue from the residents.
So here's, here's my issue with that. If you go back on to page six, which is the revenue for sewer, charges for sewer services, it's about second paragraph down there, twenty thirty-four forty-one hundred. This year, one point two eight seven million, next year, one point two two zero million. But if you look at the second line, we've budgeted in that five twenty-five two hundred. See what I mean?
Yeah.
So we raised it almost, that's basically five hundred thousand dollars. If you look at the total charges for sewer is one seven six nine for our budgeted revenue. But that didn't go up that much. It didn't go up five twenty-five, it only went up twenty thousand dollars from Central Weaver.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it would be good to ask Kami.
It's fuzzy, it's fuzzy math in my opinion.
Yeah, I know.
It's so far behind on the maintenance.
How bad is Kami right there?
I, I don't know, but if she's allocating a more portion to the maintenance side.
Reason.
Just doesn't make sense to me.
It, it seemed like it was more than twenty thousand a year.
Does anybody have a sheet where she broke it out?
Did they talk about that or at the meeting?
Yeah, it went up a lot.
Yep, was it twenty thousand a year or was it twenty thousand a quarter?
It, it's more than twenty thousand.
So it's right here, from twenty-four to twenty-five, on this sheet, it went up seventy thousand, four fifty-four to five twenty-five.
I was gonna bring that in. Did that break out? Sherry's got it.
Close to that.
Yeah, I have it.
But on this budget, it should reflect that increase.
The last one, who's meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, you.
Do I please? Yes.
I didn't bring it either.
Yes, I did. I've got it. How are you?
Good.
Okay, Brian had some sewer questions.
Okay, see if I can answer. I'll give it my best.
I gotta turn the whole thing over again. Where do I start?
In the nutshell.
So from this sheet right here, so from twenty-four to twenty-five, Central Weaver's tacking on that much, correct?
That's what I've been taught, yeah.
Okay.
Just to my knowledge.
So back on the budget sheet, for our revenues, we've added five twenty-five two hundred on a new line item, correct?
Uh-huh. Because they wanted to break that out as a separate item on the bill.
As the expenses over here, right?
So, yeah, that should match that.
Okay, so this current fiscal year, that number was included in this line right here, correct? Utilities, six thirty-nine five hundred.
I believe, but I'm not sure, I would have to look closer.
So if you take the six thirty-nine five hundred minus the one thirty-three five we're budgeting for this next year, is about the five.
Yeah, that would, yeah, it appears that's right.
So here's the six fifty-eight seven hundred.
Yeah.
Is what that. Sorry, this plus this is six fifty-eight seven hundred. So this year compared to next year, it's only going up about twenty thousand dollars.
I wonder if that's because she allowed for some additional, for some additional utilities.
Would be less. If it's seventy thousand and we're only budgeting twenty, and we're charging the residents If it's seventy thousand and we're only budgeting twenty, and we're charging the residents four hundred, the numbers aren't adding up to me. Make sense?
I see what you're saying. And I can look at that also.
Okay.
Before we adopt a final budget, yeah. I know Ryan and I both would like to see the sewer actually broke out as its own fund.
Good idea.
Just because it's, it's so much easier.
Even on the utility bill itself, it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, so, we would, we would like to see that broken out. And so, that's one of the changes me and him have discussed that we'll probably be making. And there's no legal thing we have to do to create a new fund, we just have to create it.
Okay.
And I think it will be much easier to understand. So, yeah.
Um, one thing I wanted to bring up on the budget, so when we can have a discussion, we get up there too. And I have all these numbers from Teresa who I, I know are right. Um, so we were talking one time about employees, about, about cost of living raises. So I have some numbers here that we can talk about and see, because that might be something we want to. I mean, it wouldn't be for tonight, we just have to approve it, but then it could be for next.
Yeah, the tentative basically just puts it out there that we're not last minute coming up with a budget, that we're working on it, that it's something that is in the process and not just all of a sudden we're going to stay up till midnight on the thirtieth and say, here's our budget. So, yes, it's still definitely very much a work in the process and we can change things as, as soon as, yeah.
Okay, so medical insurance went up five point five percent, dental went up three percent, um, vision went up nine, zero percent. So that ends up being the city pays ninety percent and the employees pay ten percent. So it ends up being one thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents that per, pays per employee. Um, I did some math with the cost of living raise. If they get a two percent cost of living raise, it will cost twenty-six thousand dollars. That's for all the employees overall, that's not breaking them down. And three percent Teresa told me would be thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, last year, um, every employee had a raise. Some employees received eleven percent increases, some received eight percent increases. So we can, you know, that's something though, that you, as a city council, you'll want to vote on. On what percentage, if you want to do a cost of living raise.
Or at least give us a direction on that, yeah.
Yes, direction. If you want to figure the insurance, is there a cost of living raise this year? Because it went up, Teresa said it usually does every year go up. But if you want to have that be your cost of living raise, if you want to figure out one of these percentages, but that won't be something we'll do tonight, but something you'll need to be thinking about before we adopt it in two weeks.
That's angle right, the twenty-nine, nine, thirty-nine.
Yeah, the twenty-six and thirty-nine.
Yeah, that would, that would have to be.
She couldn't find her paper for sure, but she said, I think this is it. So we can actually verify that too and make sure if that's, you know, what that is. But that's, that's one thing that, um, she said.
Again to that more, yeah, definitely.
Last question I had was, um, about fund balances. Like, there, there's several funds, you know, we talk about rolling over from the general fund into the capital projects because you can't retain a balance in the general fund, correct?
Over thirty-five percent of the, of the revenues, yeah.
So we're doing, dumping the four point two into capital projects. So my question is, is there a fund balance there already in capital projects? And are we preparing for that information? Number two, is there a fund balance for class C road funds? Since that is a restricted fund. Three, is there a fund balance for escrow money?
Okay, so on the financial statements.
And four, is there a fund balance for a written deed fund or are we starting just now to create that?
Okay, so on the financials, there is a restricted in underfund equity. And it says restricted road funds, and that was two hundred and seventy-two as of the end of last year. Local option was one point four. Your ARPA was five, five ninety-one. Then there's the unrestricted. And then we come over to, so you have to understand, and I'll, I may, you know, um, repaint myself, but the general fund and the capital projects fund are the general government funds. And then you've got your enterprise funds, which are your sewer, your water, your other things, okay? So capital projects and general fund kind of create, go under this umbrella, this one little umbrella. And so with that being said, then we look at the capital projects fund, which is where we propose to shift some of the money to, um, and the capital projects fund, which is the one city that has it at the back. So it throws me off. Yeah, I'm looking at the March. Um, and we've got, uh, seven thirty-one.
This is different, this is the, this is the balance sheet?
Yes, essentially, yeah.
That we were looking for, because I had a couple people out.
Yeah, that can bring.
Yeah, this and this. This was the March financials.
So it's in the March financials that you should have gone. I know I gave them to Morgan.
Um, it was in a packet. It was, it was last two weeks ago, it was in the packet. There was February and Marches, we're both in there.
And so, then we can see we have seven thirty-one is what our fund balance is in the capital projects. So there is non-restricted. Now, can we start restricting it? Absolutely. Can we change how some things are presented in here? Absolutely. But the capital projects fund is basically intended for your longer term things, the capital, bigger things. And you do want to save money there so that when those big things come up, you have funds there.
So go back to the road, the road funds. What was our total there?
So, it's one point six.
What's this number here?
Uh, this is the total general fund.
Okay.
So that's not just roads. Your roads would be your, um, roads and then your local option.
Which is?
Which is these two, so approximately one point six, yeah.
And the, and the roads, the class C are restricted?
Mm-hmm, class C roads can only be spent on class C projects. Is that pretty, like, as long as you're spending it on roads? Yes, that pretty much, you know, takes care of it, but, but yes, those are restricted for that type of service, yeah.
Does it show a balance for escrow money?
Escrow would be up in here, which would be four hundred and eighty-eight.
Not as much as I thought.
Yeah, so, you're, when you're budgeting, it's just looking at the income statement, so your money in, money out. But when we're preparing financials, we do definitely include the balance sheet, yes. Yep.
That was one thing, um, I had to note, but we need to get started. But, um, West Haven asked what are road impact fees? If we had many in road impact fees because to help pay for this road charging? And, and we don't, we don't collect a road impact fee, which is something we probably should look at. Like all of our impact fees, we should look at because that's what they said, well, your road impact fees paid for this. Yeah, well, we don't have any, we don't collect that, so.
And honestly, your impact fees are meant to basically make the developers pay for what their impact is upon the city. And so, impact fees should be charged if their developer is having an impact on the city, which I would argue that any developer would. Fifty-one hundred, so. The, all the new ones right there. Yeah. Yeah, and there are, there are some restrictions on the impact fees and you do have to have an impact fee study in order to charge those. And they set that based on that study.
Who does the study?
The study usually hire out, different entities will do it for you, but yeah, it's usually hired out that they'll.
They charge them in a way.
Yeah.
But, but you need them. Maybe what you ought to do is take a look at other cities and see what impact fees, not just roads, but in any other area they have and we don't have here. And then there ought to be consideration as to whether that ought to be done here.
Absolutely.
I don't.
I think so too.
The impact fees were analyzed, hmm, it's been maybe four years ago, uh, at least some of them. Probably time to take a look.
We did it specifically for sewer, you know, right?
Yeah, but yeah, you do have to have a study to assess those, so.
Go into that business.
Sorry. I didn't know you guys were doing a meeting. Sorry.
Hello, okay, we're just going to start. Do you have something you want Morgan to put on the screen or anything? You don't have to play it.
I, I killed the trend.
Okay.
How much time you want? You got fifteen, twenty minutes for me? Good?
So we have, you know, um, it, like, it shows your clear number six, but that's not very far because one and two is opening.
Stop, you got stuff in your mouth? You got it?
Yeah, you have any comments, you can add to it. You don't have any consent items and then it's.
Cool, alright.
Thank you.
I'm John. Always a pleasure beyond nature.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start our meeting. Sorry we are a few minutes late. This is the city council meeting. It is May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. We would like to welcome all of you here. It's always nice to have you here. We are going to go ahead and have our pledge of allegiance by council member Hill, and then council member Will Cox will give our reverence.
Please repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet here this evening and conduct our city business. We're so grateful for the freedoms we enjoy, for the country we live in, and for the state, and for our community. We pray that that be with us to help us make wise decisions and to represent the people's will. We're grateful for all those that serve, especially our, our military and our forces and firefighters, be with them. Be grateful for their protection. And we say, we say, and ask for it in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. If you all have an agenda, hopefully everyone's able to look at the packet. We try to put everything in the packet ahead of time and so you'll be able to follow along with us tonight. Um, just upcoming events, just wanted to let you know in two weeks, on June the sixth, will be when we will adopt our budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year. This will be a public hearing and so it will be noticed ten days prior to that. So anyone that is interested in coming, because it is a public hearing, you will have your chance to be able to stand up and be able to make comments. We always have our work meetings that begin at six o'clock where we try to discuss things. Both our work meetings and our city council meetings are recorded so you can always go on and listen to those afterwards. The only other upcoming event, which is a little ways away, but we always wanted to remind you of our upcoming Hooper Tomato Days. Um, that will be the week beginning August twenty-six through September second. We have queen contests that are prior to that during the month of July. Or the, one of them's at the end of July, the other one's the first of August. And I'll get those exact dates and we can announce those. The next portion on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? And if you please come to microphone, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patrick Rico, thirty-five oh one sat, fifty-one hundred west. I just have a quick question. Um, I heard a little bit of discussion earlier about the inter-local agreement. Having been in a draft form, does that document exist? Is there a draft?
Oh, not yet. That's what it was to, for, to have our attorney draft.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then, I, I, just based on the, the few times that I've been here and, and listened, it sounds like the source of truth and intent behind that agreement rests pretty squarely with, uh, councilman Vowers. Since he basically negotiated that, I would suggest, um, he kind of made the chart on this, um, if, if that's at all possible. And then I would just like to echo, I guess, my agreement with the conflict of interest statement at the bottom of, uh, your agenda. Um, I, I work in a completely separate industry and we have a similar statement at the bottom of every one of our, um, meeting agendas to make sure it is so easy to find yourself in a situation where with all the right intent, you end up in the wrong place. So, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, and we are going to go on then. Tonight, we are happy to have John Bond here with us, who is our Weaver County Treasurer. He's going to discuss with us about budgeting taxes, truth and taxation, and answer some questions that we might have, so, thank you for coming.
Thanks for the invite.
Thank you.
I'll give these guys just a second to, uh, load this stuff out. Appreciate that, so thank you. Good, I'm John Bond, I'm the Weaver County Treasurer, and, uh, appreciate the invite to come out and speak tonight. For just a minute, about, uh, two or three topics, taxes, truth and taxation, which is a tool that's, uh, cities others use to increase their budget. Uh, a little bit about budgeting. I didn't know Reed was going to be here, now I have to be on my best behavior. So, uh, I started the county when Reed was the county attorney and, uh, became very good friends with him. He's a great, great individual, I appreciate his friendship and others on the council, appreciate you. What I thought I'd do tonight is quickly, and if you're okay with the, with the pace, go through a lot of stuff very quickly. I put my email in front of it at the top. If you've got questions, call me. I thought I would try and attack three main topics with lots of, uh, handouts so you can kind of just give a flavor of a few things. A lot of content, sure, but hopefully I'll touch on a few things. The thing that I wanted to do is maybe treat this kind of like as an analogy to a house. So we've got a few parts of the house, we have the foundation, we got the rooms, we have the roof, and we got the stuff that makes it cool and warm. Well, that analogy then fits, I think, snugly with this idea of how do we approach the idea of local government? So as we go through this first handout, uh, which I've got sort of a little bit of a narrative, I'd like to just go through page by page, take a minute with each page, get a couple of handouts. If you have questions, stop me, or we can do stuff at the end, whatever you'd like. And we'll do our, do our best just to kind of touch on a variety of things so you can understand from my perspective, what I've seen as a county treasurer for a while, what other cities feel, do, and perhaps that'll help you also, if that's okay. So we have fifteen cities in Weaver County, plus the commissioners are, in fact, the mayor, city council for the unincorporated areas. So Auga Valley, from here to Willer, basically unincorporated. So they're the mayor, in fact, for that, for those areas. If we start with the foundation and we call that the Weaver County, uh, role in property tax preparation, we've got the surveyor, we have the recorder, assessor, clerk auditor, treasurer. So they create this foundation of the house, so to speak. Now, I'm calling you guys, my choice, the roof, the maintenance, the protector, the monitors, the air conditioning and heat, so that would be the mayor, city council here in Hunter. And then we've got lots of rooms in that house that all have different functions that are run by your various departments that you've got. So, we're going to spend most of our time tonight just on talking on the first two. The foundation, so it starts out that the legislature is in control. Not me, not the commissioners, not us. The legislature sets that framework as far as what the, what the laws are, how taxes will work. So if we want tax change, where do we go? The legislature, that's where it all starts. Then who helps them? The legislature. That's where it all starts. Then who helps them on the side to interpret and enact that legislation? The Utah State Tax Commission. So they work in tandem, the legislature. So if you've got concerns about how or what was happening with the taxing process, we need to talk to our legislators, okay? Second of all, tax commission is gonna do their best to enforce their actions. So we've got those first two steps. When you get to the process of the county, we've got the recorder. They work on preparing all the parcels in the county. We've got ninety-eight thousand parcels in the county. They work to get all the ownership, addresses, parcel numbers all set as, as what it looks like on January one. That's a big deal. January one is our point of reference for everything that we're talking about here. So they have until January fifteenth to get all that set, and then send that file to the assessor's office. The assessor right now is working frantically. They've got a week till May twenty-second to get all the values put onto all those parcels. Again, they're looking back January first and saying, what was that value of that property on January one? And that's what we start with. So the assessor next week will announce all the values in the county, or sooner after. So here they are. They're gonna take that file, give it to the clerk auditor, they're gonna then accept budgets from all the entities. We've got ninety entities in the county that have taxing capacity. So all ninety are gonna interact with clerk auditor and say, here's our budget, and here's the assessment, the, the value from the assessor. I'm gonna mix that up. And then they're gonna define how much from each parcel based on its value, what share of that budget each parcel is going to participate with or pay. So they do that and send out evaluation notice on the twenty-second of July, you get that. Then by November first, they need to send us the treasurer's office that information. We put it on a tax notice, we send it out. So we only target October twentieth, so we'll get a little bit sooner than that, but that's what the tax notice is all built on, is those, those four steps. What you've got in your packet is I just randomly grabbed a tax notice. So if you look at that second row here, there's a tax notice. On the second page, you'll see that this is the group of entities of a common property that exists in Hooper. So you've got schools, school activity. You've got Weber County that oversees certain budgets. You've got Hooper City, I've highlighted in yellow, and then you've got a variety of other budgets for different entities. I keep using the word budget because it's, I wanna kind of just really focus in on taxes are based on a budget, okay? So we'll send that budget out. I'm gonna turn to the next couple of pages and show you what the budget is for twenty twenty-three for the ninety-eight thousand properties and the ninety entities. The budget with the two numbers on the second page add up to three hundred and seventy-one million dollars. So that is the budget amount that we are providing in the treasurer's office to put on the tax notice and collect. That budget that is divvied up to all the parcels in the county. Normally, every parcel in the county has twelve to fourteen entities listed on it. If you go and look at your own, it'll have twelve to fourteen entities, basically, maybe a water charge also. Depending on where, where your property is, you're gonna have certain entities that have power or authority to act to tax on your property. So I live in Roy. Hooper does not have the authority to tax me for Hooper City taxes, nor can you charge a person in Ogden. But Weber School District can charge all of us out here, outside Ogden City, a Weber School District amount. Make sense? So every entity has its own boundary, so to speak, and when you overlap all those different boundaries, roughly twelve to fourteen entities will be on every tax notice. So why not, at the end of last year, I was charged to collect, in effect, three hundred and seventy-one million dollars for budgets for each of those ninety entities. Question. Sometimes people call me and say, John, values went through the roof twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and it was crazy. You got all this extra money. You got a windfall. What are you gonna do with all the extra money? Values went up, my taxes went up. Let's talk about that for a second. If I clarified a minute ago, what we're acting on is on a budget. So whatever the budget was, and this is again approved by the state tax commission for each entity, that budget is not gonna move, is it? No. The budget will not move. The question, secondly then, is who pays that budget? So we've got a pie. It's not moving. It's three hundred and seventy-one million dollars. Was there a windfall? No, there wasn't. None. But the question is, inside of that pie, who's gonna pay? And a very interesting thing, thing happened a couple of years ago, twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two, as well as a little bit into twenty-three, values on residential properties seemed to like gone through the roof. Remember? So all these values went up dramatically, on average, about twenty-nine percent for residential. Commercial properties only went up about fifteen percent during that timeframe. Go back to the legislature. What did they do? They built a law that says taxes are based on value increases. So there was a reallocation of budget. Less was assigned to commercial properties because they went up less in value, more of the budget was assigned to residential because the values in residential went up higher than in that timeframe. Why? Market conditions. Real estate market conditions was such that if you had a house in twenty twenty-two and you said, throw it on the market, it probably got sold pretty quick, and for a probably a price that you went, holy cow. That's an indicator of market conditions that the county uses in the assessor's office to, to find what value was looking like in the county. While when value goes up higher in a certain class, the allocation of taxes can be chased a little bit. Commercial properties actually went down in taxes in twenty twenty-two. We went, holy cow, what's going on with this? And residential share of taxes went up. Again, the budget was set, three hundred and seventy-one million. Did that allocation within that, within that pie shifted on us? I called the legislature, I called the Speaker of the House, girl Speaker of the House, this fellow represents you too, he represents me in Roy, and I said, Mike, let's talk. How do we get laws changed to remedy that? Because it, I heard from a lot of people, maybe you would guess that, they were saying really loud words to me. Saying, why are my taxes going up and commercial property taxes are going down in that timeframe? Laws of the legislature. That's the way they introduce chasing value with how the allocation of that budget goes. Does that make any sense a little bit?
Okay, sorry.
Please.
So you couple that appreciation and value with a tax increase for one of these entities. So you're saying the, the value that we're taxed on is chasing inflation, so their budgets get a little bit bigger because they have to. I'm a little confused. Because it does to me seem like, hey, they're double dipping, you know, you get a tax increase for, you know, fire, firefighters or whatever, but then that there's also an increase with the value of your house, and they get more money, so.
Yeah.
So is it just in chasing inflation? Is that kind of the concept, or are their budgets getting bigger to, to meet the demands of the entities or what?
Let me explain it maybe a little bit differently, and see if that helps.
A little slow, so.
Over my, okay. I do this every day, it's just a hoot, but after a while, you probably just think it's the second nature. If I've got a budget of three hundred and seventy-one million dollars, that's all I've got to collect. Hasn't done it with inflation or anything else. It's set. Now who pays that? A hundred, we had ninety-eight thousand parcels, and that's who's gonna pay it. So last, say, two years ago, there were more commercial properties paying a higher amount of tax, and residential were paying a little bit lesser in tax. That's how the, the pie was split up. Just gonna bring that scenario forward. And so now, the only thing that's changed then is the budget hasn't changed. Three hundred and seventy is still there. But within that budget, commercial values didn't grow as much, residential's did. And because the law was built in such a way that it says, focus on value increases, and whoever has a higher value increase is gonna share more of that pie budget, it shifted. Who pays? That's it. Is that helpful? Is that for you?
Thank you, John. Along, along those lines, so if we were to put that on a pie chart, like you said, when, when the state establishes a budget, that, that's their budget. That doesn't change. Doesn't matter if, that's just how much money they have to collect, or the county.
County. Let's talk about county. County versus state before.
County, yes. So on that pie chart, let's just say that to read that, to reach that amount of money, fifteen percent of that came from businesses, and the other eighty-five percent came from residents. How, how did that change? Is just the value in the properties? How does that piece of the pie get shifted from, from that example I explained, if I explain it to where it makes sense?
Sure. Commercial properties went up this much, residential properties went up this much. The assessor's office is gonna track the, the value on each property, and it's that tool, the valuation, that we, we use as a point of reference to allocate all the budgets. So when the assessor sends us the roll, or the amount of value for each property, and we see from one year to the next, commercial dropped a little bit, and resident, or commercial went up a little bit, residential went up a lot, we're gonna get that from the assessor, and we're simply gonna use that as a tool to do the math, to re-allocate the budget of three hundred and seventy million. So it's just the assessor's value that gives us. That's it. So. You ready to keep going? If you're okay. Next page on this handout, if you look at the list of who we're collecting taxes for, let's go through the top four. Weber School District, I mean, twenty-three million for that. Ogden District, sixty-three million. Weber County, sixty-three million. Ogden City's twenty. Now, I wanna throw you a fun little curve and say, what does it look like countywide? The next page shows an example of a half-million-dollar house, five-hundred-house dollar house in every city in the county, as well as the unincorporated area. This one you wanna go home and just play with and kind of go, how interesting. I put all the cities on the left. I put the city tax. Now, some don't have a city tax, various, Sladeville, uh, plus data, you guys did it for a while. And the city tax is there for each city. The school is the same, because a half-million-dollar house, every county has the same, that's right, for the school, for Weber School District. Ogden City is at the very bottom. The county is the same for every, every, every house in the county that's a half-million-dollar house. Get another column for sewer, water, fire. So where you get your services from, Hasbury. Whether the city, other than Roy, so Roy has its own fire department. I guess you, do you have Weber Fire here? So you hire out to, for, for a contract for that portion. So that would be included in this other column. Some have secondary water. Ogden Valley's got a little TV translator event, and then you got totals there on the right. So if I were a tax conscious, I would be living in Marion Sladeville because the taxes there are twenty-six hundred bucks a year on a half-million-dollar house. If I was really wealthy and wanted to spend money on taxes, I'd go to Ogden City because there the taxes are thirty-seven hundred dollars a year. So where you live, Hasbury, and it all depends on how, not so much the, well, when you look at the school, fifteen hundred for Weber, nineteen hundred for Ogden. There's a difference there. The Ogden City line item is one of the higher ones. South Ogden eclipses that with six eighty-seven at six fifteen in Ogden. So between those two line items, we've got a significant tax responsibility for Ogden City residents. Does this make any sense? So we might wanna play with that a little bit and see how that goes. So we'll keep going. Now that we've talked about this foundation, taxes, and who's doing what, roles, and the concept, let's talk about the roof and heating and air conditioning. That would be what I would call you, in your role, of protecting and maintaining and guiding the tone of Hooper City. So just like weather, the nature can have an effect on a house, a city is affected by issues brought to you by your citizens, your employees and others, like quality of life, traffic parks, crime, et cetera, inflation, prices, growth versus non-growth concerns, infrastructure. Mostly, infrastructure is water, sewer, natural gas, and electricity. I remember working on the feasibility study for Hooper back in the day, when you wanted to form to become a city, and worked on West Haven and Marion Sladeville, and then worked on the one out west in August of twenty nineteen, and currently we're in the middle of working one in the Ogden Valley. A feasibility study that they presented to the citizens, do we wanna vote to enact that city classification for our area? Now, out west, Harrod Willard had failed in August twenty nineteen for various reasons. Right now, in the Ogden Valley, they're gonna pursue a vote this November, and see how that goes. So I've been heavily involved in that. And so there were a lot of concerns. The Ogden Valley, we, we actually brought natural gas over from Trap, Trapstream Loop back in ninety-three. Uh, working with President, uh, can't remember his last name. But brought natural gas over to Ogden Valley. They wanted to get off their propane tanks. You guys were in the health departments. The issue was subject tanks. These are all infrastructure issues that you have to deal with, and that's what Ogden Valley right now is competing with. And how do we do self-governance? So these are all things. Zoning, how do you deal with zoning and developers? So now I wanna focus on air conditioning for a second in that house. How the city's revenue expenses are balanced affect your citizens. That sets the tone. In the wintertime, in the summertime, what do you set your house at? You set it at seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-eight, you set it at sixty-eight? Where are you comfortable? We had a meeting in the, in the Benham Hotel once. It was a while ago. And the commissioners brought, and all the people that were living out west here before Keysville and West Haven or wherever, they brought, the, the Valerian said, we've got to balance our budget, revenue expense. Do you want us to raise ta, have taxes for the first time as a line item on your tax notice, called unincorporated, or do you wanna live with less? They left the meeting saying, we can deal with less. Commissioners do not raise taxes on us. It was a decision at night. It was profound to watch the interaction between the community and the commissioners wrestle with that decision and get to a conclusion. That tone, I call it air conditioning and heat, is something that you control. And you feel that impact from your citizens as they bring issues to you and say, this or that. You say, should we adjust it down or adjust it up? And what does that look like? We'll get to that in a second. Interestingly, though, you, the city council, mayor, have inherited the decisions of those that sat there before you. Also, you will impact the future lives of those that will sit here in five and ten years from now, and you won't be here, perhaps. You will impact their decisions. So as you inherited those decisions, consider, they probably were doing the wisest things possible at the time in making the decisions that they did to get to where you are today. I just encourage you to be wise and capable as you make decisions in the future, because it's gonna impact future mayors and city council in how they interact with the community and set that tone. So. I wanted to just show you the other areas you're having similar challenges. I'm gonna take the next page on this, on this handout. And it's, that's scenario one at the top. This is fresh out of the feasibility study for Ogden Valley. You look at revenue and expense, and look what they're struggling with. The top half are your revenues, and you talked about this in your, in your work session before, before we opened this meeting. They're dealing with property taxes, they're dealing with sales tax, class C roads, and permits. That's where they expect to get their, their revenue from. And you get down below on the, on the expenses, what's it gonna cost them? They forecast administrative, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, planning engineering building inspection. And you've got public safety and public works. Those are your biggies. So do you have a lot of areas where you can play around with? No, nobody does. You have your revenues, you have your expenses, all of the cities. In fact, it'd be interesting if they do incorporate this in November, that you send a contingency up there and say, this has been our experience the last twenty years. Here's the best practice that we've found, and here's some advice. It would be interesting to have you take your perspective up there and say, this is what we've learned. Interesting, huh? Because you're right now struggling, I'm sure, with some issues. You're struggling with a lot of issues right now. It will be new to them if they do past this. So let's talk about truth and taxation for a second. That small two-page that I handed out. That small two-page that I handed out. Provides the information that the state tax commissions buys that, that end of the OLS to raise taxes can do. Is it just plain vanilla stuff? Yeah, the two pages are. All of the work comes now. Where you say to your citizens, here's our revenue expense, here's the tone or temperature we found and we got it right. And if we do, we'll stay where we are. But if we've got it wrong, then do we need to increase taxes as a tool to get more revenue? That's what the work is. So as far as the, the mechanics here, you contact the county project auditor by March first. You go through the basic, fill out the forms, you get the notices, the hearings and stuff like that. Hearings are interesting in that city, I've been to a few where tax increases have been proposed. But you've really got the homework to do now, preparing for next year or the year after. If your budget is off, that you can talk to your citizens and say, here's our best strategy for the next three to five years or next two to four years or whatever. I was invited out to West Haven a couple of years ago. They were excited to consider, well, not excited, they were considering their first city line item on the tax notice, their first tax, their first tax as a city. And I presented it for a few minutes. Couple of our people, there was a lot of discussion. Couple of people got up and thought that I was needing to be yelled at. I thought, this is interesting. So after they finished, they, they sat down, we simply, I'm just mechanics, I can talk mechanics, but you talk policy, you talk temperature. Is it warm enough or cold enough? It's your role to interpret that, that the community is, is giving you. And then set that temperature gauge and then move forward with confidence. It's complicated. The homework really starts now in designing that strategy and getting with citizens and make sure you've got the temperature right. You look at all your expenses and there aren't many. You look at your, your revenues, there aren't many sources and just refine them. The only other source of opportunity you've got there is to go out and borrow money. Let me have you turn the next page. And I'll introduce this page by saying, we've got. Normally three or four or five entities raise taxes a year. That's been common in the past. Twenty twenty-one there were thirteen, twenty twenty-two there were nine, Bishop, so forth, there were seven. I've never seen that in my life. With that many entities raising taxes all at the same time. Again, I've heard from a lot of people, they pay their taxes at their front counter or they come down the phone. It's hard. We have a series of people that are so desperate and unable to pay any of their bills and bring the taxes to those that are just hammered by higher expenses and they can't pay the profit in their business. A lot of challenge. I got this out of today's newspaper. Somebody wrote, how about we give you, he's writing that to me, Weber County, how about we give a break on property taxes? Let's say you're over sixty-five, how about we stop increasing your property taxes on that home? This will allow us with inflexible incomes to have security in their lives. Weber certainly updated the rate once the city, house sold or the person, person passes. Do I have, have a treasurer control over answering that question based on what I've said tonight? Who does the legislature? They control how taxes work. He wants me to cut off taxes, property taxes for anybody over sixty-five. I love that because I fit into that category, it's cool. Would I want that? Heck yes. But do I have control over that, that decision? I do not. He's going to have to talk to Mike Schultz, his representative, and have Mike represent legislation to get it to happen. Last year, legislation occurred for those that are seventy-five or older, that they can defer their taxes till they die if they still hit certain qualifications. So there is something for seventy-five and older right now, that's a year ago. But I don't have control. Another way in your budget of the property tax increase that you can work on is sales tax. Let's talk about sales tax for just a second. How do we encourage sales tax to occur in a way so that it will come into your city as a revenue so that you don't have to raise as much revenue somewhere else, like in the property tax? So what do you do? You find corridors of sales tax. Let me back talk to the Valley County, you all know where the Valley market is, that four-way stock once you get up there. You get the four-way stock, the Valley market's there, you kind of go, okay, I think there's Maverick now there, there's New Maverick. You got the four-way stock. They've got a corridor where they could put businesses to create sales tax. And that's been a discussion we've had with them. From Stonecrass to Eden and maybe down further, that would be your corridor. Compress all your businesses in there. Why? Because you get sales tax and that helps generate revenue here and it doesn't have to go up in a property tax increase. Or you increase taxes and don't generate sales tax. Or you reduce services. It's not that much beyond those two, two or three things. You refine that model, but those are the basics. So we've talked about it a lot with the Ogden Valley. When we did Op, uh, West Weber incorporation, you got Twelve Street, you got forty-seven hundred West, there's your corridor. You compress all your businesses into that corridor, later everything else open. And everybody goes and does their transactions there, they get sales tax and helps generate revenue. Are those tools that you use? These are policy decisions that as you act and you're zoning and, and how you respond to, you know, your citizens' needs and requests, you wrestle with those, with those decisions. The next page on this handout shows just how sales tax is allocated. There's a lot of stuff on that page. It basically says you get one percent of the seven point two five percent of sales tax that is paid. So is Holiday in your city or is it just the Sinclair? Holidays in Roy? Okay. I thought I saw the Hooper side just on the fence after. Okay, well, you get the Sinclair, people walk in there, they buy their gas, you get their one percent, that seven point two five that they're paying for the, for the gas and for the Twinkies, whatever they buy. And so that's where you're looking at is how you generate revenue. It offsets them.
I've got a question on that one.
Yes.
So obviously we spend money in other cities. What's the percentage that the state is back to us for spending money in other cities?
That's true. If we go to that form, go to the very top. On the left, that first chart part of the left, at the bottom of the column says seven point two five. You see that? So that basically breaks down to seven point two five. So a lot goes to state unit town, four point eight five. One percent, I call local, goes to wherever the site is. So whatever city you're in will normally get around one percent. There's, it's split into a population and a site type thing. Basically you get that one percent, let's just call it that. The rest of that seven point two five is going to UTA, it's going to the county, it's going to Ram. Okay? So to answer your question, when you go somewhere else, who's getting that one percent? Local is whatever jurisdiction you're in. So when you go by, go up to Roy, please do, and buy stuff, it's going to Roy City. You get nothing back.
I was under the impression of the school gives us something that we found back.
Okay. I, we can get where, there's a little tricky formula and I'll get to that for a second. The one percent is based on fifty percent population and fifty percent site. Or meaning where, where, where the transaction occurred. So the site is the fifty percent of that one percent is going to be right to the jurisdiction. So Roy, Hooper, Zalang, whatever. The other fifty percent based on population is going to be split up statewide and countywide. So I think you're talking about that second fifty percent of that one percent. And based on your population, you're going to share in that. Generally speaking, it's between point seven five and one percent. So that's what average is based on those two formulas, but generally speaking, are you getting to be about one percent? Yeah. That's kind of where I'm going to get the end of the answer, about one percent. So if you put more business in your, in your community that have generated sales tax, roughly one percent of that is going to come to you. And then you put it in revenue and it offsets expenses.
Or any online sales, we get the full one percent as well, correct?
Exactly. Yes. So I, I know we got one more thing left and I'm done. Let's talk about RDAs. I don't think you've got an RDA yet, have you?
No.
Okay. We call it, the legislature decides to change the name of this every three or four years. Today it's called CRAs. So Community Reinvestment Agency. You go to the last couple of pages, you're going to find it from the legislature, just to break out a link of how that works. But in a nutshell, what happens is a developer comes in to a community and says, we want to build something. We think we can make a profit here. And so I'm thinking what they think in their mind. We can make a profit here. How do we encourage the community to accept our business? And how do we make a profit with that, knowing that we've got certain startup costs, expenses, etc.? They're going to come to the community, as they've done about thirty times throughout the county, a lot in Ogden City, some in Roy, some in South Ogden, North Ogden. They come to the community leaders and they say, will you help us get established? We will be good neighbors, we'll pay our property taxes. But in order for this to pencil, for it to work for us, we need our property taxes back. So will you just give them back? And you kind of go, sure. We understand you've got expenses under your command. We think that your service will be helpful to our community. And so the developer comes in, they ask the city, the labor city council mayor to consider developing CRA and say, how will this work? They will then go to those taxing entities of the biggest normally on the tax notice. Who are they? Schools. The city and Weber County. That's who normally gets petitioned to say, will you participate with us in this project here or here or here or here? So Weber County gets approached by a lot of businesses and a lot of requests with cities to help them facilitate this developer command. But it happens that Weber County has this school district, where we'd be working with you in Ogden or Weber School District. So in this case, Weber School District. The developer would say, would you give up a portion, and normally it's fifty percent to a hundred percent, of your tax line item for our property tax, would you give that back to us? Then they come to the school district and say, would you participate with so much percentage for a certain period of time, ten, fifteen years? And give a portion of taxes we pay with your portion on the line item, would you give those back to us? And then we come to the county. And once they, once they address that with all the three biggies, basically, they often will say, okay, we can now hit our mark as far as math. We think we can make this work. So at this point then, county is approached by a developer, whether it's in Roy, which we're currently working with Roy on nineteen hundred. We start at Harmons, go to Freeway X amount of fifty-six hundred. And that block right there is being discussed currently by Weber County, Roy City and Weber School District to improve that whole stretch of land between Harmons and, and Constance. What do they want to do? A lot of stuff. Hotels, storefronts, all this other stuff. The White Lumber used to be there forever, still there, it's framed, it's, the memory's gone. But White Lumber is still there. Could it be changed dramatically into a different environment in Roy City? And would it then what? Generate sales tax? So all these things are in motion currently with Roy to develop that section of land. That's today's discussion. It may, tomorrow might be a discussion with Hooper or Plain City or whatever. So we have to design a model where we'll accept giving up the split line items for Weber County. The school district will give up their line item of the taxes paid on that property only. And say, well, refund or return this money to you after you pay it. Give it to the end of the city. You then design a budget based on how to develop the, the infrastructure for it and off you go. Does that come with a lot of homework? It does. You just have to do your homework and figure out, is this the right, the right model? And will that work for our community? And what are the other pressures, pros and cons that can go with that decision? So.
Are you, are you talking about the one percent that you give to the city that you, you're telling as well? Or just the Weber School? You know what I'm saying? So do we give up some of that one percent in the CRA agreement? Is that where you're standing?
If you're talking about one percent sales tax?
Yeah.
Uh, hold up, topic.
He's talking property taxes.
Oh, you're talking property. We're talking property taxes. So you look at the property taxes, so say you, you have a certain amount of property tax that's currently coming to Hooper City. Or say you implemented a higher property tax for all your citizens. It would be the Hooper City line item that we're talking about only. And that would be what you would address. They wouldn't get much from that, but they could get enough money from the Weber School District line item and the Weber County line item to make a pencil. Therefore, they're a little bit more, if I can say it, they're more dynamic in their discussion with us to encourage us to participate with a fifty or seventy-five percent of the taxes that they pay the, on the county line items for ten or fifteen years. So they strongly encourage us to participate so that we can refund it back to them. And then they'll use it for those stations, sewer, infrastructure, whatever, water, power. Yeah. Does that make any sense a little bit?
Yeah, but, but then if we're, if the school district is taking less money.
Yeah.
Then they're going to want more money. I mean, overall, they need so much for their expenses, their operating expenses, right? And so if they're giving some of it away, then eventually, aren't they going to want it back sooner than later?
Based on the length of time that they agree to, they forego receiving that money. And their budgets are going to have to work without it.
Okay, so they, they agree to not raising their portion of the taxes.
They agree to forego receiving that, that property where that development is only. So just from that, from the taxes from that development, they will forego receiving fifty or seventy-five percent of that that is receiving the taxes on that property. They'll forego that for ten or fifteen years. And their budget's going to have to work otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
How's that? Have we covered enough topics yet?
Yeah.
I'm done. I thought, I know I was going to go horseplay, but I decided to. Thanks for listening to me. Do you have any questions? Give me a, you know, some emails or websites at the bottom for, for the CRA and for the tax commission checklist for if you do a tax increase. But really, I think I've tried to cover the house, the county's role, your role, setting the tone or temperature, finding out what your citizens need and putting that into policies, decision making and then doing the best you can for future city council mayors. How's that?
Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any other questions?
Just one thing maybe. I understand this, but maybe everybody doesn't, is the certified tax rate. Every year we set a different certified tax rate based on property values that go up and down and are all in between. And so even with a property tax, every entity that collects taxes has to go through the certification and rate process. For example, the fire board, two years ago when property taxes, or when property values went way up, I was, I was on a panel that says, we want to just hold the rate. You know, we didn't want to decrease the rate even though property values went up. And I says, no, absolutely not. Why would we hold the rate if values go up? We're going to collect all these taxes on increased property values. And so this panel, councils, boards, all these people decide that certified tax rate as well, whether it goes up or down or stays the same. So it's very important as well.
Yeah. Let me just address that real quick. The tax commission allows you to have the same budget from last year brought to this year. So if you get two hundred thousand dollars for your taxes, you get two hundred thousand dollars from last year, you get the same amount this year, two hundred thousand dollars plus new growth. New growth in my calculations normally three to five percent. So five percent of two hundred thousand, ten thousand bucks. So you not get two hundred thousand, but you get two thousand plus your new growth. So two thousand and ten this year. That's what you're authorized to receive. How we create the formula for certified rate based on value, simply as a math tool to allocate that two thousand and ten. simply is a math tool to allocate that two thousand and ten, two hundred and ten thousand dollar budget amongst all your citizens, amongst your properties. So to your point, when a board says, we're going to hold the rate. I call it a tax increase, that's what the tax commission calls it. You've got a public public hearing, and you say, we're raising taxes. It's collect, it's a one is that. They've raised taxes, they have to call block events, and so they have to have a meeting to say, we're raising taxes. We may call it, we're holding the tax rate, I don't buy that. They're having a tax increase. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. That's how I understand it, yeah. But it's, like you say, it's, when you say, hold the rate, you're thinking it's not a tax increase. But when your value goes up, it's absolutely a tax increase.
Yes. We do okay?
Any other questions?
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is public hearings, which we don't have any. So our next thing is, we are going to talk about our tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Sure. We're like, what, six items, sixty? I don't know if you want to discuss that.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
I think we discussed that fairly well in the, in the work meeting. So what we need to do is, at the bottom of the minutes, put the declaration of any conflict of interest by the council. At the bottom part of it. And then the second point that kind of came up with this agreement between West Haven and Dale and myself should probably negotiate that, just to protect, number one, you and the city from any conflict of interest, I think. And I don't know how the other council members feel about that, but I think it's probably important. I think there's, might be a little too close. And I just think it's wise, operationally wise for our city to see someone else. Maybe we can be a little stronger with them, I don't know. So maybe too nice to them, I, I don't know. But I think, in my mind, I think that's probably the best way to go. So I don't know if we disagree amongst ourselves, if you disagree, that's fine too. But that's just my, that's my thoughts.
Well, I think Brian and Jared should be heavily involved in that negotiation as well, being the public works director.
Yeah, and I think it'll be the attorneys as well. I think the next meeting they do, they will want to probably involve the attorneys because that's what they had wanted anyway. And so we can definitely get the information and send our attorneys, and they can be involved as well with that, which we will talk about probably when we get down here a little bit further in the agenda. So, okay. Any other discussion on that then, with the conflict of interest? Okay, sorry, didn't mean to skip that. Okay, public hearings now, and now we're to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. All of you have a copy of that. We have had one work meeting on this so far. We discussed it in our work meeting prior to our meeting, our city council meeting last time. Any questions you have for Kami and Ryan that are here with us tonight? Kami, would you like to come up? And, okay, this is our treasurer, so.
Hi. So right now, we just need to adopt the tentative budget for the city. Basically, we're saying that this is what we would like to, kind of see what the budget ends up like. But it gives basically the public the opportunity to comment on it and to review it and everything. It does have to be available for ten days prior to, for public inspection, prior to the adoption of the budget. Or before the public hearing, sorry. And so we've got the public hearing scheduled for June sixth, I believe. Sorry, okay. But I'll remember here. As of right now, the budget that you have, we do kind of foresee that we are thinking that the utility franchise tax, we think that is a little low, we might see a little bit more revenue with that. We think this could be actually closer to what we have budgeted for this year. But so we'll probably anticipate that that will go up. And then I think everything else that had been discussed in the meetings have been accommodated to, other than the cost of living. We would need some direction on that to present that, so.
So do we have another work budget meeting? Is there a time we discuss this otherwise? So by the time we come back on June sixth, that is the budget we are going to be adopting, of course, with a public hearing and public input. But is there any other time that we meet to discuss this?
It is up to you, you very well could do another meeting. You do have to have it available for public inspection, like I said, the ten days.
Yes.
So that's kind of the major thing. But on the same token, you know, you, it's a budget, a budget is a working document. So it does amend throughout the year. It can be amended whenever council sees fit to amend the budget. This is definitely very much a working document, so. But yeah, if you wanted to have another work session, we certainly could, we do not have to. There's fillings either way as to whether some people say, no, don't have another work session after you've done a tentative. But you certainly can. So, but what you have in your tentative should be pretty close, which I feel like is the cost of living.
So on those couple, a couple of directions, you said we need to go from city council. They, we would do that that night then, on June sixth? If they decide, you know, we talked about the cost of living, that would be something they would tell you that night then? Or is that something we'd tell?
It would be something that needs to be told beforehand. Because the final budget does have to be ready to be adopted that night.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Kami, can we touch on sewer and garbage changes?
Yeah, we did increase, the budget does also account for the increase in the garbage and the sewer. I'm trying to remember, I cannot look them now, because that was finally decided on. Because I don't. Okay, so the garbage fees were going to have to increase, and also sewer. Sewer was the big one that was going to be an increase.
So the budget includes those increases or changes?
That we think already increased.
Yeah, the budget does include those.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember what the exact dollar amount was up in. Trace, I ended up coming with, up with on that. Yes, those are adopted in that, so.
So if we, if they make them, if someone makes the motion and they approve this tonight, then what's in the budget tonight is what will go forward. So the one thing that they need to decide, I guess, tonight is then, if we want to go with these increased utilities that are already included in the budget, and also according to the cost of living raises for employees. Okay, yeah. Okay? Okay, discussion?
So I've got, I've got two numbers here, one for the sewer, one for the garbage. The sewer is one point seven six nine, garbage is seven oh nine eight hundred. Is that accurate or not?
As far as the total amount?
With, with the increase?
Yes, I believe those, yeah, one point two for the sewers.
One point seven six nine.
Oh, yeah, one point seven, like the, also the sewer district increase, and then the garbage was five eighty-nine. And a hundred, or a hundred and so seven.
So I guess the question I had in our work meeting, I would like some clarification on that before I was okay with that section.
Okay. Yeah, and we can certainly, you know, go through and do some clarification before we adopt the final budget, definitely. It's just the tentative, it does have to be adopted tonight, just basically saying that we have a document that we are working with, and we've got a good basis for a budget. And then like, right, so we can certainly clarify and get some more analysis. And if you do decide to go against it, then that, you know, that's your decision by all means. So you don't have to make that final decision tonight, but you can give staff some direction as to if you're thinking you're going to. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So.
The other thing I wanted to ask about was the capital improvement section. We had the seven hundred and fifty in capital expenditures. I'm assuming that was for the fifty-nine hundred West project, correct?
I believe so. Yeah, I have that as fifty-nine hundred West was a seven hundred and fifty, yes.
And then do we need to add anything in, any of these line items for a potential fifty-one hundred West project?
I think if we do the fifty, when the fifty-one, fifty-one hundred West project comes in or back, then we do a budget amendment. I think that would be a more appropriate, you know, action is to do an amendment for that project.
Okay.
Once that's under contract. And that's exactly the type of thing that you would do an amendment for.
Any other questions?
So the other, the other item we need to discuss is the cost of living increase.
Yeah, and just give, if you could give me some direction as to what, the way we're thinking.
So two percent would be twenty-nine thousand and thirty-one?
I believe that's the numbers that Teresa had ran. Three percent was like thirty-nine?
Yeah. I mean, she, her computer wasn't working quite right, so she said, she thought this was what it was, but I can't, and she wasn't a hundred percent certain, but I'll tell you the number she gave me. The two percent cost of living was twenty-six thousand, the three percent cost of living was the thirty-nine thousand. And already built in here was the increase of insurance.
So I know, in our work meeting, we discussed about the raises they got last year.
Last year.
However, there's kind of a note to that, that our employees, seriously, did a study of surrounding communities. And they were severely underpaid and, we need, we act with employees, we need people. And so that kind of brought them up to like the bottom.
Exactly.
So that by all means, they were, you know, overcompensated. So in my mind, I'm, I'm tempted to give them a raise on this two percent. I don't know, yeah, they're, I'm in favor of increasing.
So what was the cost of the increase in insurance?
So the ins, so Hooper pays ninety percent, the employee ten percent. So for each employee, it's one thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-one cents per employee. And then each employee pays a hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
What was the total on that? For all employees?
Oh, I don't, you know what, I didn't do it for all employees. So we have currently, so ten employees that receive insurance, eleven?
I think ten.
Ten employees that receive insurance.
So th, those numbers are annual, is that correct? The ones you just discussed?
As far as, I think, they went up fi, as, and again, like I said, Teresa's computer was doing a little bit of a glitch. She told me insurance went up, medical five point five percent, dental was three percent, and vision didn't go up at all.
So that's about twelve thousand five hundred?
So I, you know, I did some math. Some of our employees with this, it's about a three percent cost of living raise, including their insurance. If you figured that, we have, but we have other employees that make more, so that wouldn't have been like a three percent. And again, it's up to city council to decide what you want to do with that.
And I'm seeing raises for cost of living all over the board this year, so, with other cities as well, so it's.
Well, maybe a little bit of clarification too, to those in the audience of, when Teresa did this worksheet, the last time that the sewer increased was in, was on June twenty-first, twenty twelve. And that's when we went to fifty dollars a month. Prior to that, it was forty-three dollars a month. So when Teresa went through, we have our, she calls it our debt service, but we still owe eight million dollars to the state for our sewer. So the twenty, she figured twenty dollars a month per resident on the sewer pays for that payment that we owe. We were, we had, we were only paying twelve dollars a month for maintenance, and that maintenance now is twenty-six dollars a month, they figured. And we've had ARPA money in the past, so we have been using ARPA money for a lot of our maintenance costs. Some of the replacement parts that we have been purchasing. Central Weaver gave us, it went up from eighteen dollars to twenty dollars per resident. We have two thousand, two hundred and eleven residents that are on sewer. And so if you take the difference, we've been charging fifty dollars, and she said, really, to cover our costs, it needs to be sixty-six dollars. If you take that sixteen dollars, times it by the two thousand, two hundred and eleven residents on sewer, that comes to thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars a month that we are not covering our sewer costs, and you charge, take, times that by the twelve months, and it's four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars a year that we are not covering with our sewer costs with our current fifty-dollar a month rate.
And that, in the past, they'd use some impact fees as well for tables, but impact fees are not a study. So that's why it's included in the budget, the increase.
Which is something we talked a little bit about in our work meeting. We currently are not doing a road impact fee, because that was brought up, you know, as far as like this West Haven project. Road impact fees, we, we don't collect those. And maybe we need to look at our park impact fees. Sewer impact fees to the Weber Central went up actually nine hundred dollars per resident. Not, that's not our portion, that's what the sewer will be getting for each new sewer hookup. And that starts July first.
Like the dollars typically pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you were saying that sixteen dollars goes from fifty to sixty-six, we will cover that, Central Weaver's increase?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, it includes that increase.
The Central Weaver increase was only twenty thousand. So the majority of it is because of maintenance.
Maintenance.
From what I can tell.
But you've got to remember, you have a big chunk of ARPA money that's used for maintenance, and that was a one-time money. That is not, is not likely to come again.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what Teresa said, that we've been using ARPA money. So she said it's kind of, we're taking out of one pocket to pay the other, out of that pocket to pay the other, now the one pocket's empty, and we don't, we can't get more money from that.
Yep, exactly.
We do still have some ARPA money that we need to decide what we're going to do with.
But there's some other things that we're needing.
Yes.
Those funds, and so it's like, either you do it here, or you do it there, you only have this bundle of money.
And utility accounts, if I understand right, are really supposed to be self-sustaining. We legally are not supposed to charge more for our utilities than what they cost. On the other hand, we really should be charging the amount for our utilities, what they do cost.
Exactly, yeah. Yep.
Well, I, I'm with Bryce. I think the two percent increase for the employees isn't that big of a chunk out of our budget. Since they are some of the lower-paid employees, I would like to keep them and.
Yeah, and my understanding was, based on Teresa's previous study, was that last year's was to try and get them at that basis. It wasn't like, all of a sudden, they were getting a big raise just because. It was, you know, and also a little bit of a merit, you know, deciding.
I know, so they're trying to coach each other's employees, so that's just the beginning of the year, so.
Yeah, we definitely want to keep good employees, for sure. We've got some great ones, for sure.
With supervisors, we've talked about implementing merit increases, because we really have not done that in the city. But again, we need to have the funds to be able to do that.
Yes, and it's, it's a hard juggle.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Supervisors have said they don't want to say they're going to be giving their employees merit increases if there are not the funds in order to do that. So we do need to look at that and make sure we have those funds to be able to do that.
Yes. So what I could do, kind of from what I'm hearing then, is that, kind of get it prepped with the two percent cost of living, and then get you another copy to review. But as of right now, if we can adopt the tentative, then we can, you know, proceed that way. Does that work?
Any other? Any other, any other discussion on this?
Make sure I'm understanding everything that is wanted.
Okay, so is there a motion then, to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the tentative budget for, um, twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Does she need to say and include that additional cost of living, or you will just?
That's fine, I'll just not, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing on our discussion then is on the volunteer committees. We, um, talked about this last, two weeks ago, and all of you should have in your packet some proposed mission statements. This was done by Brian Stecklein, one of our residents here in Hooper. And we have had this in our last newsletter, we talked about forming some volunteer committees here in Hooper. We've had several residents that have said they're interested on being on a committee. And so we talked about this a little bit, this also is in your packet. In your amended packet, you should have been able to look at those. There were some committees that were proposed with some mission statements. So any discussion on this? No? So is there a motion then, that we adopt volunteer committees in Hooper with the proposed mission statements? And again, these are a work in process, so they can, we can certainly amend, but this is, um, somewhere to start. Any questions, or motion to be made?
He said some of these were from the website, right?
Uh-huh, yeah, the, I believe the first one was the one that's actually ours, that is the... The first one is the Hooper City Mission Purpose Statement, and that's, that is ours from our website, is the one. So, and then these, um, I know he went through and looked at other committees, what other places are doing. These are just not anything set in stone, but just some tentative ideas of what they might do. Maybe as these volunteers start meeting, there might be other things that they would like to incorporate. I know when you write grant grants, we are supposed to have a community arts council. Um, and those of you that didn't pull this up on your packet, it was an economic development, community arts council, beautification committee, and a community events committee, which we already have a community events coordinator for that committee.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt these volunteer committees, as listed in our packet.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Wilcox, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by Councilmember Northrup, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, um, also the next one then is a discussion motion to draft an inter-local agreement with West Haven City for fifty-one hundred west improvement. This is a fifty-one hundred west project that extends from thirty-three hundred south to four thousand south. West Haven is looking for an inter-local agreement that Hooper City will financially participate in this. There's also a light that, so the, the project from thirty-three to four thousand is a WACOG. That is a Weaver County grant that was received, then they paid, um, the majority of this. The light is a UDOT project on the corner of four thousand and fifty-one hundred. So this is, um, something we discussed in our work meeting about possibly meeting more with the attorneys, with the, um, our public works, as well as with a member of the city council and our engineer. So any discussion on this, or a motion to be made?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we have some more information on it. Um, and, and then go from there. I, I just don't feel that we have, um, enough information to make a, make an ordinance or amendment on this at all.
Okay, a motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni to table this until we have more information. Any, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox, any discussion on the motion?
So when is the next meeting? When, when does, when does this resume discussion, I guess, is the question?
So our next meeting would meet June sixth.
On, on this subject?
Um, well, that's just when our next city council meeting is, yeah, they, oh, they, they have not.
To West Haven.
Yeah, they didn't set another, I think I'm not set one yet.
That it would be set soon, I would.
Oh, sure, I, I would think at any time. We want to schedule that, they would be more than happy to meet and talk about it because.
Because if we table it, it's going to come up on the next meeting.
Yes.
So are we going to be prepared for the next meeting?
Yeah, it should be done by the next.
So you set the meeting prior to that. So who takes the initiative to set it up?
I'm happy to set up the meeting, if you want to go, you and Del. Um, I know you, yes, and Bryant and Jared, and probably, like I say, legal counsel will probably want to be with that as well, so. Brampton or Rudy are on it, so, yeah. Okay, any other discussion on this? On the motion? We had, we had the motion, yeah, we had the motion made, we have, it would, to table it, we have the second made, and then we're to the discussion on the motion portion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, question carried. Okay, the next thing is the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero three. This is clarifying Title X zoning and subdivision. This was in your packet as well, everyone should have a copy of this in your packet. Does anyone have any questions? So one question I had, because we talked about this before, so the beginning of it is the ADUs, correct?
Yes.
And we had talked about maybe having somewhere in there some language that they could come into the city and fill out a temporary absence form, is that in here somewhere, and I just missed it? Um, and they were, they would fill that in the office, we talked about maybe some, some examples, like if someone had gone on an LDS mission, or if they were serving in the military.
Right, so if you go down, uh, if you look on that front page, go down about halfway, it says, "Any exception to the only occupancy requirement must be approved by the commission." So they can come in with any exception they want with the planning commission. Uh, well, over time, I presume, make a, a list of things that they accept. I've thought about trying to list all the ones we can think of, the problem is, there'll be ones we don't think about.
Sure.
It's better to leave some flexibility there.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
So this, this ordinance really does two things. It does talk about the, um, the attached units or detached units. Uh, the same requirement is imposed in each case, that the person has to be living in one of the two units, except, uh, under an exception, it would be granted by the planning commission. The second part is the complication of what's been discussed for the last month or so. Uh, those recommendations came up from the planning commission, uh, as to how you make a change in the map portion of general plan. Uh, and this is what they recommended with some additions that came from the discussion here. Uh, just hopefully you've read that over to the field company.
Okay, does anyone have any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three, as recommended by the planning commission.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second is made by Councilmember Wilcox, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, because this is an ordinance, we need to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so our next one then is the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero four. This is an ordinance clarifying the rules relating to the six-member council form of government. We also discussed this before, that we have had a change, this was several years ago, and I think it was you, Debbie, that noticed this, that we, it had never been changed on one of our ordinances. So again, um, our attorneys have looked through this, has everyone had a chance?
So this is a long ordinance that does very well. Uh, it does make the one change, and the problem is, you need to put the whole thing in just so you can get context. So the change really is just changing it from four to three, to have a, a carry role in the council. So you have to have three, and then when you exclude the mayor, who's not a voting member, uh, you've got five people on your group, so you have to have at least three. Four, I said four, that was a little over the limit, so, and I think that was based on when you set a seven-member council. Uh, I put the rest of the material in there for two reasons. Uh, one, because you need to really, when you put a section in, not just put a section of it, but put the whole section in. Uh, but also I thought it would be helpful for you just to read over, uh, the provisions relating to the duties of the council and the duties of the, of the mayor. Uh, those are already in statute, and those are not, nothing new there, it's just what's already in there. But that does remind you what those roles are. And then last part, I think, addresses a, a discussion that we've had on several occasions regarding, uh, what are the ethical requirements set by the city? Now, I mentioned in the work meeting, state has adopted a number of changes to the state ethics provisions related to cities. And so these don't rec, uh, reflect those, those are brand new, and, uh, they're requiring now that there be an annual, uh, disclosure and statement signed by each of you as a market official. It actually goes on the website of the city and can be viewed by the public. Uh, and it will talk about not only ethical issues, but also conflict of interest issues, if you own, uh, interests in businesses that are doing business with the city, but, uh, that's still in the process of being developed. I think Morgan and I will come up with what the leading city and towns has, and whatever changes we think up that we may, and hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have that ready for you. Uh, but if you go to page seven, uh, section one dash five, or one dash one dash five, those are the ethical rules that apply to your city and were adopted many years ago, and I think a lot of people don't take the time to read those. Uh, there was some discussion there, I think when we talked about that three-person vote, about, uh, can you vote if you have a conflict of interest? It's pretty clear here, if you have a conflict of interest, uh, to the extent that the city council feels it's a conflict of interest, you cannot vote. Uh, and so I think those are pretty well covered, but I thought you ought to read those over, and if you think, uh, we do need some clarification, then let's talk about that. But that's, well, that's it. But really, what you're voting on today is just a very simple change from four to three.
Thank you, this was good though. I hope everyone does take the time to read through it, because there's a lot of really good information in there. Okay, any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, is there someone that wants to make the motion then, to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four, uh, clarifying the rules related to the six-member council form of government.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Wilcox, seconded by Councilmember Hill, any discussion on the motion? Okay, this, because it is an ordinance, this also needs to have a roll call vote, Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, our next ordinance, a lot of ordinances tonight, and I think we might have a couple more next time as well. Um, this is on the Lumen franchise ordinance. We, this motion was tabled at city council meeting on May second, twenty twenty-four. As we talked about in our work meeting, we are still in communication with Lumen, back and forth. We really have not received any further clarification from our last meeting when it was tabled. So is there any discussion on this, or is, does someone want to make a motion to table it again? Do we table it again?
Yeah, really, this is, this is their request to receive franchise, and so until we have them meeting with us and deciding on exactly what the provisions are, doesn't make sense to the document.
Yeah. I, I was just gonna ask, is this basically the same agreement, franchise agreement that we've done with the other entities?
This one is exactly the same. Now, they're gonna want a few changes, and that's what we need to talk about when we come up with it.
Okay.
Is that including providing service to the city in areas that we prescribe, like we did with Connect? Like the city building, the sewer lift stations?
They did put that in, in that agreement, and we won't have that in disagreement either. Uh, it includes more, uh, their thoughts of what happens when they cease doing business. Uh, they're wanting a longer franchise than what we've granted others. Um, they probably won't do that, but that's what they're asking for. Uh, so there are a number of things that they've asked for that are a little bit different than what we had in the past. And, uh, I'll point those out to you if we agree to any of them, so you know what you're voting on when it comes to that.
So that was just a verbal with Connect, correct?
It was, got their request.
Yeah.
Well, I would make a motion that we table this again, since we haven't heard back from them, since they haven't made effort to get a hold of us and talk to us about an agreement that they would recommend. Uh, that being my reasoning for motioning to table it.
Maybe, maybe not table it for the next meeting, just table it until we take it back off the table.
There you go. Yeah, 'cause that might take a few tables, so, uh, I'll just, we'll, uh, motion to table it until such time that they contact the city and provide the information for the agreement.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councilmember Fowers, was seconded by Councilmember Marigoni, any discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we're to public comments, if anyone has any public comments they would like to make? Okay, seeing no, oh, you do have one, I'm sorry. If you'll state your name again and your address.
I'm in S E C Greenfield, I'm up in February on South with two hundred west in Hooper. Um, a couple things. First of all, mic seems to be working, I'm not screaming because there's so many people, but, um, that is one thing. Can we make sure we have good microphones for future meetings where, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people at them? Um, secondly, I'd like to ask, how many hours are you obligated to come to Hooper? Because, can I ask him, or I don't know, is there, somebody?
Do you need families?
No, 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 just, just, um, patrolling Hooper.
Contract.
I believe we operate on calls for service, and that's what gets charged, is how many calls of service happen per year to Hooper City. So it's not an obligation for, we have to give you forty hours a week with the deputy of the city, it's we have to respond to calls for service, and that's what our charges are based on.
So you're just anywhere that you get service, and then if somebody calls, you just come here? And is it you specifically, or any of Weaver County?
Yeah, Weaver County deputy.
Uh, pardon me?
Anywhere Weaver County deputy.
Okay. Um, and then all of you know, like, probably that I emailed each and every one of your question. Some I got some good answers and some helpful answers, others I got told, sorry. Um, so that was interesting, but in the last two planning commission meetings, we've stood up, me and my husband, and asked if... Now wait, this is where I have to get on my phone. And look, um, if the, we were asking the planning commission, but apparently it's the city council that needs to do it. That's what we were told in the last meeting. Um, if the city council can make a motion to suspend consideration of conditional use permits, requesting any of the following conditional uses, until criteria that comes from proper analysis and deliberation can be established. Those uses are children's treatment facilities, daycare facilities, daycare home, group, group daycare home, drug and alcohol treatment facilities, foster home, group, group foster homes, and residential care facilities. Um, is that something that you guys can do? Can you guys, uh, I, and most of you should know the reason that I'm asking this, is because the clown show, they showed up at the planning commission, saying that they were gonna have nature walks and all these other things. Right now, we do not have the language in our code to prevent them from putting multiple facilities on that fifty-seven additional acres, um, where they're planning to put the current. multiple facilities on that 57 additional acres, um, where they're planning to put the current treatment facility for children. And all the other surrounding cities has that language written out in their code saying that they have to be, depending on what it is, if it's a group home, or I think it's five miles, but most, all of them say three-fourths to one mile from another facility. So that's why we're asking that that just be temporarily, um, put on hold for any new incoming applications for conditional use, just for those health and human service things that I listed. Is that something that you guys can do tonight? I don't know.
Certainly not tonight?
No.
Can't do it tonight?
We can do that if that's okay. Well, you can, the, the reason for a conditional use permit is for conditions to be set. So if you wanna look at conditions that other cities are using, you can use the same conditions here.
So, can I ask a question regarding that then? So, like, the one that has been, that's currently being looked at? Um, can they look at other cities and how many people they allow into those? Or are we pretty much blocked out because we don't have any language in our code right now?
Well, it is a conditional use, so the planning commission can set conditions, that's what they do. And if, if those conditions mirror what other cities have done, that's probably okay.
Okay. And then, one last question, I'm just wondering how the city plans on if this does go through, um, since we have a sheriff on call. I did do some calling, and, and I know, um, Riverdale, since they're the ones who are currently in the news. I mean, there's the current one with Sandy as well, but, um, that seems to be the one that everybody's talking about, um, is they have 19 full-time police officers, they are a community of the same size. Actually, I think Hooper has a few more, um, in population, as Riverdale, Riverdale just has a whole bunch of resident, or, uh, what's the word?
Businesses.
Thank you. Anyways, and so, um, I'm just wondering what you guys, if you've given any thought? 'Cause I know I've seen, you know, several of you at these meetings, and I know that you know about them and you're aware of them. So if that's being given any thought, and what your plans are, I guess, to protect the community, and especially our kids that are gonna have to be walking back and forth in front of that facility if it's approved? Does anybody have any thoughts?
I'll give that lots of thoughts, but we don't have time to do that.
And I think, like our attorney said, this is certainly a conditional use. I felt like the other night at the meeting, that there were excellent questions that were asked. I felt like our city, um, our planning commission members were very well-prepared. They came and asked a lot of questions. I felt like our attorney gave a lot of answers, and a- as you know, because you were there at the meeting, it was tabled. So that does give more time for them to look into this, as far as what can be done. So, yeah, like it was answered, we cannot tonight pass anything, and some of those that are listed in there is very difficult, where it's, um, like daycares and foster care and...
And that's why it would just be like a temporary, you know, not, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying there, but I also think that we need to be writing out our code and getting that done, and, um, looking out for, because you could tell, just by what they're, how they were talking, you could tell that, I mean, I, I don't know what they have planned, but it was definitely a show that they put on, so.
Well, I think, I think that can be one of the conditions too, depending on what the planning commission decides, is how close the next facility can be built to that facility, you know, that, that's a condition. You know, another condition could have an eight-foot non-climbable fence with a padlock around it. I mean, you know what I mean, there's so many things the planning commission can say, we want this, 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 and this before we approve it, so that's one of them.
I'm excited.
I think she's right, though, we do need to do something on our code, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, who, if two of us decide, hey, let's, let's put that on a motion, either for next meeting, or I would, I would be in favor of that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Jake Kelso, 51 East going south, 59, 50 west. Um, I was here for the working meeting, and I actually liked Bryce's original suggestion of putting the, um, conflict of interest as an item, so it's discussed, not just on the bottom of the agenda. So I was just gonna throw that out there. The inter-local agreement is looking at Haven-based boundary, and it does not cross 4000. So I'm not sure whether light has any bearing on that school, so I think that should be considered. Um, I do think that it should be Bryce leading the meetings, and the council member, or not councilmember, mayor should be refused from that, since you have a conflict of interest, he's your boss. And, oh, and I also think that, I know you already approved the 3%, but I think 3% would be more appropriate for cost of living. Cost of living's way higher than that for everybody.
Thank you. Clarification on the light, the light is not part of the school, 4000 and 5100. That is something that UDOT, so what they do is they're called warrant studies, and UDOT does those, and it's based on the amount of accidents. Those of us in Hooper are very familiar with accidents that occur on the corner of 4000 and 5100. We have had a few cars that have actually projectile into a couple of houses. For us personally, our grandfather was killed on that corner, so I, that was not part, so there is two different ones. And the one was a WACOG, which is the expansion of 5100, that is for the school. And then the other one is a UDOT, and that is the light at 4000 and 5100. So they are two separate things.
Yeah, during the week, working meeting, I understood those to be the same.
Yeah, no, they are two, they are two separate.
And my son is actually a key bone at that same intersection, so I don't know how dangerous it is.
It is. Yeah, I had suggested if not, and that, the light for sure, a four-way stop. Anyway, I also called UDOT and requested a warrant study, and was told that, that they have already approved to do a light at that corner. And when that will begin, they wanted us to put that money in our 2024-25, at least, that 50,000 for that, 'cause that would be our portion for the light, because that probably will be completed before our next fiscal year, that will be the 2025-26 budget. The other project, probably not, but the light very well could be by then.
Okay.
So.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes, thank you.
And one other thing I did think is, the only neighborhood at Hooper is past 4000. So if we just had crossing guard, which you discussed as well, right there, taking them to the east side, then you wouldn't need sidewalk all down the west side, 'cause there's nothing else on the Hooper side down that entire stretch of road.
Yes, that, that is correct. When they do widen the streets, generally it is a curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides, and that is one thing we discussed. The problem either way, even if we have a sidewalk on both sides, I brought up the fact that even if you have children that have a sidewalk on the west side of the road, and they come out of that subdivision, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe it's about 73 Hooper students that are going to be going there from that subdivision, how can we guarantee they will stay on the west side? So if they come out and they walk on the west side and they see their best friend Johnny on the east side, they still might wanna run across the road, and so whether we end up with a sidewalk on the west side or not, we really need to start thinking of some safety mes- measures with possibly a crossing guard of our own. Probably West Haven would not go in on that, because all those students would be coming from the Hooper side. But we just don't ever wanna put our children at risk of crossing the road, and we say, oh, they will nicely walk down their side. They won't if they see the friend across the street.
Alright, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing that other than, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Maragoni, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And second was made by Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all so much for coming.